All righty. Good afternoon and welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of Monday, March 10th. Please be advised, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chambers by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a short moment of silent meditation, and remain standing if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. The Order of Business of the Lincoln City Council is as follows. The clerk call items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on the item must first register and sign in at the table located in the lobby. The council shall require any member of the public addressing the council to identify themselves, the name of any organization represented by such person, and their address unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. Each speaker should state whether they are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads the item and the applicant has presented. After public comments, the applicant may make one short rebuttal. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that day nor planned for a future agenda. Tonight is one of those meetings. We will have open public comment at the end of the agenda. We ask that all speakers strive for civility and allow the business of council to proceed unimpeded. Madam Clerk, will you please read the first item of business?
Our first item of business today for our city council meeting of Monday, March 10th, 2025, is our consent agenda, Sections 1, 2, and 3.
All right. Is there anyone here to present on the consent agenda? Director Elliott?
Good afternoon. Elizabeth Elliott, Director of Lincoln Transportation Utilities, 555 South 10th Street. I'm here today to talk about Item 1B, which is approving the selection of a contractor for signal projects on 9th and A Streets, 9th and D Streets, 10th and A, and 10th and D. These are signal replacements at all four of these intersections. This was one that was bid out by NDOT. We now have the bids back. We had three bidders. The lowest bid is Lobato Construction, and that was just a little over $2.1 million. The city's share of this is 20%. The rest funded by NDOT on these. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think that's it for this package.
All right. Do any councillors have questions? Councilman Duden?
Where's this contractor from?
And I don't have... Hold on, let me see if I have this here.
Too tired. It's fine.
I believe they are out of Colorado. Yes, I believe it's Brighton, Colorado.
Okay.
Which is always good to get more competition, more contractors here with all of the work that we have going on. But this is very narrow. It is just signal replacements, and so we're happy to work with them and NDOT.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Director Elliott on this item? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to present on a consent item? I see you, Mr. McGinnis. All right. Is there anyone here to speak on an item on consent, either in favor or in opposition? Seeing no one, we'll move forward to the voting session on consent.
Okay. I'll call Item 1A, Approving Garage Beers LLC Doing Business as Liquid Asset Sports Bar and Grill Located at 2755 Jamie Lane, Suite 14 through 16, as Aquino Satellite, introduced by Beckius.
So moved. I'll second.
Second. Carlson, any discussion? Please call the rule.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 1B is approving the selection of a contractor pursuant to the bids to be opened on February 27, 2025, and authorizing execution of the construction contract between the City of Nebraska Department of Transportation for the use of federal transportation program funds for design, construction, and construction engineering of the signal replacements at the intersections of South 9th Street and A Street, South 9th Street and D Street, South 10th Street and A Street, South 10th Street and D Street Signal Replacement Project, introduced by Beckius.
So moved. Second.
Second. Carlson, any discussion? Please call the rule.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 1C is affidavit of mailing for the assessment of the cost incurred by the city for the assessments of the fees and penalties for neglected buildings on property located at 3801 South 37th Street, 2902 North 41st Street, 7300 Briarhurst Drive, 824 South 16th Street, 1425 South 16th Street, 1934 F Street, 835 North 30th Street, 3001 Q Street, 1511 South 2nd, 1980 Park, 1859 Van Doren, 3281 Center, 234 South 38th, 1039 C Street, 341 North 30th, 917 South 10th, and 719 West Leon, and assesses of fees and penalties for property cleanup and boardings on property located at 3100 Q Street, 1511 South 2nd, and 824 South 16th Street. That item was placed on file. I apologize about that. Items 2A and 2B were introduced by Showb.
So moved. Second.
Second. Carlson, any discussion? Seeing none, please call the rule.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Moving ahead to public hearing on liquor resolutions.
Item...
Yeah, go ahead.
4A, Application of Res LLC Doing Business as Chief of Stand Butts and Booze for an Addition of an Indoor Basement Area Measuring Approximately 22 Feet by 29 Feet at 4821 Cornusker Highway.
All right. Is the applicant here today? All right. I believe... Is there any discussion or questions councillors have on this item? Madam Clerk, you may read the...
More public.
More public. I'm so sorry. Is there anyone here who would like to talk on this item, either in favor or in opposition? Item 4A, the application for the addition of an indoor basement area.
Now I'll go.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, I'd like to ask a question of building and safety, if they're still here.
Is building and safety in the room? Are they in the back room, I mean, not this room? No, I didn't see them here either.
I believe David Carey's here, if that's helpful.
With planning?
Maybe that could help.
David Carey, would you please come forward? Pardon me, Director Carey.
You know anything about this building facility at all?
I will be honest that I'm not really familiar with the building, so if there are some questions, I certainly can field those and follow up with you on that.
I'm just kinda wondering, is there just one way down to the basement, one way out? That sort of thing?
I think I could get those answers to you quickly, but I can't give you that answer standing here right now.
I'd like to know that.
Okay. Can do that.
Would you like to put this on hold?
I think I'd like to make a motion to put this on hold for one week, if that's possible. I want to make sure it's safe enough before I vote on anything like this.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I understand what my fellow councilperson is saying, and I appreciate his position. Sometimes when these applications come forward, there is a timing issue.
Yeah.
And so I don't know that from this application, whether we're up against the clock on how many days. Madam Clerk, do you know that?
I can find the answer here. I don't have it readily available.
Is this something we could just delay for a few minutes while Mr. Carey researches something, maybe put it further down on the agenda?
Councilman Beckius?
The applicant does state, or excuse me, Investigator Parker does state in his opening letter that the existing license, the expansion of the existing license, is to be used for storage purposes only. So I don't know that a customer would be accessing that space at all, if that plays into your decision-making, Councilman. I think that they're just planning on using it for storage, it appears. But I think that because it's storing alcohol, it needs to be a licensed area.
It does.
Oh, okay. All right. I'd be satisfied with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
All right. That's very helpful.
Thanks, Dave.
Sure.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on this application? All right. Is there anyone here from the public who'd like to speak on this item? I'll open that up one more time.
Yep.
This is the item on the application, a liquor application. Are you saying you'd like to speak on the liquor application, sir?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Chair, seeing no one else coming forward, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Item 4A.
All right.
I'll second.
Second. Carlson, any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
All right. Thank you. All right, let's move forward to public hearing resolutions.
I'll call Item 5A, Pre-Existing Special Permit 23K Application of Nebraska Wesleyan University to Pre-Existing Special Permit 23J to Expand the Nebraska Wesleyan University Campus to Include Property Formerly Known as the Alpha Gamma Delta Sorority on Property Located at 2541 North 50th Street.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Seacrest.
Good afternoon to all of you, too. My name's Kent Seacrest. I'm representing Nebraska Wesleyan University in its effort to redefine and add the former Alpha Gamma Delta, often known as AGD, former house to be part of the campus. Reason we're here is a university is not a right in a residential zone unless it has a special permit. So therefore, when we want to expand the university, we need to amend our special permit, and so that's why we're here today. This is one of the coolest buildings in northeast Lincoln in my book in aesthetics, and it was built originally in 1905, so it's 120-year-old structure. In 1927, or basically 98 years ago, it became the home of the Beta Alpha Chapter of the Alpha Gamma Delta House and International Women's Fraternity. And just recently, it has ceased to be the AGD House, and unfortunately, even last month, the International Chapter announced that the AGD campus has to close down and will not have a facility or a sorority on campus, which is sad to our hearing. So what happened was Wesleyan University bought the house in December of last year with the intention to bring it into the campus. It always has been part of the campus, but this time, instead of being a sorority, it will become part of the university's more traditional functions along the way. And so that's what we're here to do. Basically, this is the map. That blue area just shows where that house is and how it would join in the rest of the red allocated area for the campus. And meanwhile, Nebraska Wesleyan is now engaged internally as well as with the community as to what are the best uses to bring forth for that old, great, beautiful house that everybody wants to keep. And it could be administration or admissions center for new prosper student, prospective students, alumni. It could be a career, and it could be community engagement outreach programs. Those are the things that are being kicked around, and if any of you or anybody in the audience has any other ideas, we'd be glad to listen to them and consider them as well. With that, I'd be glad to answer any of your questions.
All right. Councillors, do we have any questions on this project, this application? Certainly understand how a university could want to grow a little bit bigger, and it's nice to see that the university is going to take care of the house and pull it into, since it's historic, and pull it into their operations.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on this item, either in support or in opposition? Anyone here to speak on this item? All right. We'll move forward to the next item.
Item 5B is correcting the legal description of the used permit area by repealing and replacing Resolution Number 894987.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. Abby Luttrell from the Law Department. This is really just to correct a drafting error for a piece of legislation that was before you, and it was approved in January, I believe. And we get lots of legal descriptions that come in, and there was just a mix-up on one. So by approving this, you repealed the former. None of the substance changes, just gets the correct legal, so it can be filed with the Register of Deeds.
All right. Do any councillors have questions for Ms. Luttrell? Thank you.
Thank you.
Seems simple enough. And is there anyone here today who'd like to speak on this item, either in support or in opposition? This is a correction on the deed, a legal description. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, let's proceed.
I'll call Item 5C, Directing Submittal to the Qualified Electors of the City a Proposed Ballot Question for the May 6, 2025 General Election to Adopt or Reject an Amendment to Settle 11 of the Lincoln Minnesota Code to Prohibit Discrimination in Renting or Buying Housing in the City of Lincoln Based on the Basis of a Person's Lawful Source of Income.
Good afternoon, Mr. Christie, City Attorney.
Good afternoon. Johansson Christie, City Attorney, 555 South 10th. This item, 5C, is a proposed ordinance by initiative. The city charter, our city charter, provides that ordinances may be proposed by petition by the qualified electors of the city. The Lancaster County Election Commissioner has verified that the required number of qualified electors have signed the petition. And now, since that is complete, our city charter states that it shall be the duty of the city council to either enact such ordinance without amendment or submit the ordinance to a vote of the people. The Resolution 5C that is in front of this council is a resolution to submit this proposed ordinance to a vote of the people at the May 6, 2025 city general election. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do any councillors have questions for Mr. Christie? Mr. Weber?
Mr. Christie, can you speak just briefly on this process, if it's something we've seen before as a city, if it's something that the council engages with regularly, and what next steps look like?
I don't believe that this is something that the council has seen. If the council has seen this, it's been quite some time ago. I think that there are similar things that have been brought forth by initiative. An example would be charter initiatives, to amend the charter, but that is different than initiative by ordinance. There are similar processes. That is a similar process to the process that is in front of the council, but it is a different process. Another example is, would be the process for referendum, if the city council, you know, enacts an ordinance, and then there's a process where qualified electors have, I think, 15 days to get signatures for referendum, and then there's a process that could also go to a vote. Those are two examples of where something could end up being put to a vote of the qualified electors of the City of Lincoln that is different than this process. But those are just two examples that I give you. So again, so this process, they have to file the necessary paperwork, they have to get the necessary signatures, the signatures need to be verified, and the election commissioner has verified those signatures, and then it is turned into the city, which that has happened. And then, as I stated before, the options are to, for the city council, the options are to enact the ordinance without amendment or submit the ordinance to a vote of the people, and that is where we are at today.
Thank you. I think that's helpful context for any potential public hearing we have on this. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other councillors wanting to ask a question, I think we can move to public hearing on this item. I want to welcome everyone who's come to speak on this item. I would remind you that you have five minutes for your testimony. Please state your name and your address clearly before you begin. You may waive your address for security reasons, if you feel the need for that. And if you're representing a group, please state the group that you're representing. I hope you've all signed in in the lobby. It just makes it easier for us to do record-keeping later. And with that, I welcome the first person who'd like to speak. There are two microphones, so you can stagger yourselves and speak from either microphone. Good afternoon, and welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Judy Kelly. I live in Lincoln at 8304 Rockledge Road, 68506. I am the Vice President of Action and Community Engagement for the League of Women Voters of Lincoln Lancaster County, and it is on the League's behalf that I am testifying today in support of Lincoln for Fair Housing. The local league is honored to be one of the Lincoln community organizations, including Civic Nebraska, Nebraska Appleseed, the NAACP Lincoln Branch, and the YWCA and others, who have come together to support Lincoln for Fair Housing. The League of Women Voters of Lincoln Lancaster County is an active advocacy group of about 140 men and women who are dedicated to protecting democracy. As the League of Women Voters, we faithfully execute our civic responsibility as nonpartisan advocates, and we focus on issues that are important for our community. The League of Women Voters of Lincoln Lancaster County supports the Lincoln for Fair Housing Initiative because it is both a nonpartisan issue and it is important to the citizens and the community of Lincoln. We believe continued patterns of discrimination occur due to the covert support of community leaders, institutions, and residents. Source of Income discrimination violates the equity of opportunity for Lincoln renters and buyers. Equity of opportunity is a very strong value of the League of Women Voters. Our position states, "The League of Women Voters of the United States believes that the federal government, with other levels of government, has the responsibility to provide equality of opportunity for education, employment, and housing for all persons in the United States, regardless of their race, color, gender, religion, national origin, age, sexual orientation, or physical ability." The Equality of Opportunity position further states, "Responsibility in this nationwide effort to achieve equality of opportunity for access to housing resides with government of all levels, and with the private sector too, including builders, lending institutions, realtors, labor unions, business and industry, news media, civic organizations, educational institutions, churches, and private citizens." It is because of the League's commitment to equality of opportunity that the Board of the League of Women Voters of Lincoln Lancaster County voted to join the Lincoln for Fair Housing Initiative and to dedicate our advocacy resources to the passage of the ordinance banning Source of Income discrimination. We do this fearlessly, reflectively, and collectively. We act from a place of hope and collective power. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Where do I?
Would you like...
Terrific. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, members of the city council. My name is Sam Meyer Bates, S-A-M-M-E-I-E-R- hyphen B-A-T-E-S. My address is 2344 Washington Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68502. I am a member of the Lincoln for Fair Housing Coalition, and I am here today to voice my strong support for Source of Income protections in Lincoln. I have seen firsthand how the lack of these protections directly harms renters in our community. For multiple years, I worked at the hub central access point for young adults, helping young people who were unhoused, in unstable housing, or aging out of foster care. I assisted hundreds of young adults in navigating the rental process, applying for public benefits, and securing housing. Many of them qualified for Section 8 vouchers, which should have provided them with a lifeline to stable housing. But instead, they faced constant roadblocks. I will always remember one family in particular, a couple with three young children. They were living out of their car, scraping together money for gas and food while their children rotated between staying with relatives to avoid involvement from Child Protective Services. Services. They were doing everything right. They worked with me for weeks to apply for a Section 8 housing voucher, gathered lost social security cards, attended multiple required interviews, and finally got approved. That should have been the end of their housing instability. But in Lincoln, having a voucher isn't enough. Landlords can and do refuse to rent to people based solely on how they plan to pay their rent. This couple applied for dozens of apartments only to be told, "We don't take vouchers." They called every landlord on the Lincoln Housing Authority's outdated list of participating properties only to find waitlists stretching months, sometimes years. They had 90 days to use their voucher before it expired, and despite both parents securing jobs, they still couldn't find a landlord willing to rent to them. Eventually, they gave up and used what little money they had to rent a one-bedroom apartment without Section 8, an apartment that stretched their finances so thin they continued living paycheck to paycheck, one emergency away from homelessness. They were forced into a living situation that was financially unsustainable, one they could barely afford without cutting back on essentials like food, healthcare, or transportation. Without their voucher, they were one unexpected expense away from eviction, a reality that too many Lincoln families face when they are denied access to housing assistance. This is not a unique story. These tenants had stable rental histories and met all the usual requirements, yet they were still turned away simply because of their source of income. Right now, in Lincoln, 1 in 3 renters who receive a housing voucher have to return it unused because they can't find a landlord who will accept them. Source-of-income discrimination disproportionately harms single mothers, seniors, people with disability, disabilities, and Lincolnites of color. It keeps families trapped in cycles of homelessness and housing instability when they have already done the hard work of securing assistance. For years, this city council has acknowledged that Lincoln has a housing affordability crisis. Today, you have the power to ensure that no family has to sleep in their car simply because of outdated and discriminatory rental practices. Lincoln can and must do better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer Bates.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Hi. Brent Lukey, 1617 F Street. I haven't spoken to a council since I was like 17 years old, and I decided to do this three hours ago, so I apologize if I get a little mixed up. But as I mentioned, I live at 1617, so I'm a resident of the near-south neighborhood. And I would say that I'm also a proud Lincolnite. I'm also somebody that, for most of my life, has been able to take a roof over my head for granted. I grew up in a wealthier family in Grand Island, I came here for college, and because of my background and my income, I haven't had to really think about this until it's been raised as kind of a, I guess, a concern by this ballot initiative. I think kind of a few values I kind of just wanted to touch on to sort of frame the conversation is that, first and foremost, the purpose of housing is shelter. And the placement of that housing is the foundation of our community. And I think that, at its best, Lincoln has always been a place for those that have been seeking a new start, and the foundation and the first step of that is finding housing. Whether it be the first immigrants, that first large immigrant population they called Lincoln Home, the Germans from Russia, from which we got the great state treasure of Roger Welsh, who, because of the housing affordability of that part of the town, as well as other notable cultural icons, both in Lincoln and Nebraska's history, such as Marie Sandoz, who came to Lincoln in escaping a marriage elsewhere in the state, which, if that story were transposed to today, that would most likely be a person who would be using a Section 8 voucher to find housing, or certainly somebody who would need some form of assistance getting back on their feet. The history of the Section 8 voucher, Housing Choice Voucher Program, kind of came after our public housing experiments of the 20th century, and I know I'm a history buff, so I swear I won't like go too deep into this, but there was a book in the 40s called Modern Housing by Hannah Arnt, and in it, she laid out kind of the foundations and principles, some of which were adopted, some of which weren't, but kind of created the cultural narrative around public housing in the United States. We ran that experiment through the 20th century, and I'm sure all of you have heard the stories of that. And unfortunately, due to a number of factors, one of which being the concentration of poverty and the sort of, instead of giving people the option to live in the communities that were creating new ones that were only for people of lower income, we came as a country to this idea of having the Housing Choice Vouchers, one of the means to provide housing opportunity for people who, good, quality, safe, and affordable housing for people who otherwise can't have it provided by the private market. And the promise was that the private market would provide, you know, housing through the subsidization of the Housing Choice vouchers for anybody. However, and I won't break the data points too much because the prior testimony covered them, the private market in many cases has failed in Lincoln to carry up its part of what this Housing Choice, Section 8 voucher system is supposed to be. A third of Housing Choice vouchers fail to find housing in Lincoln and Lancaster County, and at a broader scale, 44% of renters of all income levels are cost-burdened, I mean, over 50% of their monthly income goes towards rent. So, many of us are probably only one paycheck or one loss of a job away from needing a Housing Choice voucher as well. So, I would say that, as council considers whether you want to pass this, adopt this measure today, or put it to the ballot, I think that the value that's important to me, and I think to many Lincolnites, is that one person's comfort or risk tolerance as a landlord shouldn't come above someone's right to have a place to put their head at night. And I guess I'm proud to be a Lincolnite in a community where so many people came out in order to put this question, both to you all and potentially to the ballot next election. I just wanted to close with a little quote from the aforementioned Marie Sandoz, that I think that all of us could take as inspiration, not just on this issue, but much of our life. "The man living alone can't do much, or can do whatever pleases him, but if he lives amongst others, he must learn how to be, he must learn how to use, or how to, sorry, he must learn to do the good for all, and without strong leaders to see this done, the people will fail, and the nation, or maybe in this case, our beloved Lincoln, will break into small, defenseless bands." In the capital of the good life, I think everyone should have a place that they can call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. Good afternoon, members of the city council. Happy Monday. My name is Melissa Becerra Gonzalez. My address is 3772 Everett Street, and I'm here today both in my personal capacity as a proud Lincoln community member, and with the Nebraska Civic Engagement Table to express our strong support for Lincoln for Fair Housing, because all Lincolnites, every single one of us, deserves a fair shot at stable housing. At the Nebraska Table, we are committed to building transformative, inclusive community power across the state through year-round civic engagement, rooted in the vision for a state where all communities are valued, supported, and seen. Direct democracy efforts are core to our work. By taking it to a petition of the people, Lincolnites identified a clear issue hurting our city, and it is a testament to the power of our communities that the direct democracy process is working as intended. Healthy, robust civic participation, like what we have seen from the thousands in Lincoln that support this effort, is key to building a strong city. This year, the will of the people in Lincoln was heard, and it was very loud. After drastically surpassing the expectations of signature collection, it was clear that through this citizen-initiated effort and all of the, all of those 15,000 signatures, fair housing protections are strongly needed in Lincoln. This is a strong and symbolic statement regarding the reality that most of us face when it comes to housing insecurity and discrimination. The freezing cold temperatures and the limited time to collect signatures didn't stop us from connecting with Lincolnites, listening to their lived experiences, and agreeing on the major urgency and community need to, first, enact source-of-income protections, and, second, to establish competent public policy that mitigates the concentration of poverty and all the life and danger in circumstances produced by unaffordable, unsafe, and inaccessible housing. We completely agree with the council's work to prioritize the protection of civil and human rights, along with the investment in a strong and robust workforce. Therefore, it is crucial to acknowledge that this issue, as you have heard before, affects our single mothers, seniors, veterans, people with disabilities, and community members of color. In other words, our essential workers, whose labor nourishes the City of Lincoln in several aspects. Standing up against source-of-income discrimination upholds our values as Nebraskans and enriches the human capital in our city. The effectiveness of source-of-income protections is backed up by research and studies that support the improvement of voucher utilization and the purpose that this program serves, along with the reduction of extreme poverty. Please help Lincoln become an exceptional leader, just like those 22 states and 128 cities that have source-of-income protections. To honor and respect the will of the people in Lincoln and all of your constituents, particularly the ones that are heavily impacted by the housing affordability crisis, city council should pass this ordinance now or place this on the May 6 ballot to let our voices be heard once again and build a stronger city. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Marais. Is there anyone else who'd like to address council? Welcome.
Hello. My name is Bob Reeves. I live at 3236 Dudley Street, and I'm a member of the Clinton Neighborhood Organization Board, and our organization is one of the sponsors of this petition to get this ordinance prohibiting source-of-income discrimination in housing. And I wanted to tell you that just before this meeting, I came from an Ollie class on housing issues taught by Wayne Mortenson, who used to be the leader of Neighbor Works, and he was talking about solutions to the housing affordability crisis, both in Lincoln and throughout the country, and he put strong emphasis on source-of-income discrimination, stopping this as an important way of dealing with the housing affordability issue. So, it's something that I think is part of a mix of many things that may need to be done to help us meet the challenge of both homelessness and affordability. I helped circulate the petitions, and often when I was talking with people, I didn't have to do a lot of explaining because they already were well aware of the problem. They either had experienced source-of-income discrimination themselves, or knew someone who had. Several people told me about how they had gone to landlord after landlord, only to be told they did not accept Section 8 vouchers. In some cases, all seemed to be going well until a landlord discovered they had a voucher and then refused to rent to them. One woman was happy to have finally found a landlord who would accept her voucher, and she lived in his building for more than a year with no complaints from the landlord, and then suddenly, he told her that she would have to move out because he was no longer accepting Section 8 vouchers. This is the type of thing that this ordinance is intended to correct. We have a big problem with lack of affordable housing, both for renters and purchasers in Lincoln and around the country. Public assistance programs were created to help people afford housing, but they don't work when landlords refuse to accept this form of payment. To me, this is just a matter of fairness. Lincoln's housing ordinance has already prohibit discrimination based on race, religion, sex, disability, familial status, handicap, and ancestry, and marital status. This would simply add lawful source of income to that list. It would not prohibit a landlord from vetting a prospective tenant, asking for references, and requiring a tenant to fulfill any normal obligations of a good tenant. It merely says, "You can't refuse to rent or sell to a person solely because of his lawful source of income that helps pay their rent." So I would urge you to go ahead and pass this legislation now, and that would be the preferable thing, but definitely, if not that, then put it on the May ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
My name is Isabel Cratville, and I live here in Lincoln. I won't share my address in this moment, but I did write it down for y'all. And I've lived in Lincoln since 2017 for school, and I have moved probably to about six times, and have lived in about six places between then and now. And I will say personally, on every listing between Zillow and Facebook Marketplace and even Craigslist, it says right on the listing, "Section 8 voucher, housing voucher, need not apply." I come from a background where thankfully I did not need to use Section 8, but if I had to use those programs, then I know that it would have been very difficult to do so. I'm not part of any organization, I'm just a citizen who is concerned about the quality of life with her neighbors. And in November, I had the opportunity to go collect signatures, and I decided to. And over the winter, I primarily sourced those signatures at the Charles Gere Library. Some of you who might have seen me know that I approached everyone, and I met people who were landlords and homeowners, and people who were tenants, and people who were on Section 8 vouchers. Folks had very mixed reactions. Of course, everyone knew that there was a housing problem, but sometimes I would immediately get shut down, oftentimes by people who were landlords, who did not want to have the, who did not like the idea that they wouldn't be able to automatically reject folks from even applying, just because of what they have to use to make ends meet. And I also had a lot of people say that folks who are on Section 8 are "these kinds of people that don't deserve," quote-unquote, "handouts," and people who are not worthy of housing, essentially. And when, in reality, at that same library, I would meet people who were on Section 8 housing, who were families, primarily single parents. I, in particular, met a family who moved from Louisiana to Lincoln, and in the span of like a couple of months, they had to go from motels to living in their minivan to find a home that would accept a Housing 8 voucher that was also someplace that could accommodate the size of their family. I want to say also that I feel like this upcoming few years is going to be very difficult for people financially. I am coming here directly from trying to begin a community garden, not as a fun side activity, but to feed people, because it's going to be needed. People are not going to be able to afford basic necessities, and people are not currently able to afford basic necessities like housing. And I'm trying to do what I can to help my neighbors. I ask, as city council, that you do the same to help your neighbors, and please consider listening to us, the people of Lincoln, and support income-based housing protections. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Emma Marsnick, and I live at 301 West Charleston Street. I'm a college student renting an apartment here in Lincoln, and I'm here today with, as a volunteer for Nebraska Appleseed in support of Lincoln for Fair Housing, because everyone deserves a fair shot at stable housing. As a college student, I don't have a large source of income. I work two jobs currently in Lincoln, and then one in Omaha as well, and yet I still barely make enough to cover a month of rent for the cheapest available apartment, which is $475 a month. I fully depend on my parents' financial help to help pay for school, groceries, and rent, and I know I'm not the only student who faces this struggle. My friends, roommates, and fellow students either overwork themselves to be, to be able to cover school and housing, or rely on parental aid. This is only from a student's perspective, which makes me wonder how someone is supposed to cover rent on a minimum-wage, full-time job. According to the U.S. Census from 2024, nearly 50% of renters struggle with paying rent. Source-of-income protection- Source of income protection laws would stop landlords from discriminating against renters due to their source of income, which would help tenants who use housing vouchers or rent assistance to find a place to live. In 2023, there are about 430 homeless individuals living in Lincoln. While the struggle for housing would be due to various issues, many would be able to use these SOI protections to have a place of safety. Implementing these laws would protect current tenants who live paycheck to paycheck as well. This would allow people to use rent assistance and resources and housing vouchers, which would decrease the amount of stress and potential health issues that they'd face, such as freezing in the winter or overheating during the summer. 22 states and 128 cities already have SOI protections in place. To council, I urge you to pass this ordinance today, and if not, if it's on the ballot in May 6, to the people in the audience, I urge you to vote yes. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, members of City Council. Hi. I'll keep it kind of short. My name is Chue Qaiang, C-H-U-E-Q-A-Y-A-N-G. I reside at 1720 C Street in the Near South. I've been living in Lincoln for the past 10 years. I'm originally born and raised in Omaha, but I'm a proud Lincolnite. I'm here in support of source of income protection in Lincoln, and I think you've heard from a lot of folks who spoke in support that a lot of neighbors in our community really needs this. You have the power to do it, to enact it. I really suggest you do. If not, it will go up to the ballots, and I think personally, I think this kind of hits personally because my parents used a lot of these resources growing up as immigrants from Laos, and they have been residing in Nebraska for the last 45, 46 years. So I remember growing up and having to, didn't really have to think about why we were moving around so much or why my parents seemed to struggle a lot until, you know, I was also trying to figure things out too as an adult. I'm glad that a college student came to speak that resonated with me as well. I struggled a lot, living paycheck to paycheck in college, and I think it really shows that people are struggling, it's unaffordable to live and pay rent, and yeah, I think, please, please enact this, and that's all that I have to say. Oh, and I'm speaking just as a community member and as someone who lives in the Near South for a while. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Qaiang. Welcome.
Thank you.
Hi, Councilmembers. I am Chelsea Egan-Burger. Image one: We see a nurturing home with a happy tenant. Lincoln is home to 296,000 people. Around 46% of our neighbors are renters, just over 136,000 of Lincoln's residents. Image two: A tenant's housing is disrupted. Many in our community experience life situations that can disrupt their housing stability. Examples include unemployment, domestic violence, disaster, changes in income, and changes in occupancy. In Lincoln, 44% of our neighbors experience unaffordable rental housing, and over 11,000 pay over 50% of their income towards housing. The MIT Living Wage Calculator indicates a living wage for a single adult in our city is $20.48. You add a child to that household, that increases the living wage to $36.84. Image three: The renter experiences being unhoused. In 2024, the point-in-time count identified 501 individuals who were unhoused in Lincoln. 124 of those were under 18. 19 are veterans. 163 live with a mental health condition, and 87 experience domestic violence. Image four: The renter seeks support from public assistance programs. Public assistance programs like Section 8 vouchers, Social Security, disability, and veteran benefits play a crucial role in supporting tenants who can't afford their rental housing. Accessing these benefits and programs takes significant time, organization, and attention. It requires sharing personal and intimate information that can be dehumanizing. Waiting for a response can take years. Image five: The renter takes their housing voucher to the private market. We often hear the following in opposition for source of income protections. Landlords should have the right to choose their tenants based on their preferred criteria. Countering that. A ban on SOI discrimination doesn't take away a landlord's ability to screen tenants based on legitimate factors like rental history, credit score, or references. It simply stops landlords from rejecting someone solely because they use housing vouchers, disability benefits, or other lawful sources of income. It's unfair to burden private property owners with more regulations. Countering that. Housing is a basic necessity. Fair housing laws already exist to protect people from discrimination, and we already have housing codes that reflect many of the Housing Authority regulations. Source of income discrimination disproportionately affects working families, veterans, seniors, and folks with disabilities. Protection simply ensures equal access to housing and opportunities for all lawful tenants. If landlords don't want to participate in government programs, they shouldn't be forced to. Countering that. This proposal doesn't force participation. It ensures that people using lawful sources of income aren't turned away unfairly. Image six: The renter is unable to find an apartment that accepts a voucher within the 90-day window. Nearly one in three voucher recipients have to return their voucher because they can't find a landlord who will accept it. Source of income discrimination is banned in 22 states and 828 municipalities, where it has been shown to cut the voucher failure rate in half. Source of income protections are one piece of the puzzle, and they work. By passing source of income anti-discrimination policy, Lincoln can live up to our reputation as a welcoming city for all of our neighbors. We ask you, our City Council representatives, to do the right thing and oppose this form of discrimination in our city. Choose people over politics. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Egan-Burger. Is there anyone else who'd like to address council? This is the source of income discrimination. Yes, it includes public housing. Please come forward. I know you've already started.
Thank you, Chairwoman Washington, and thank you to the rest of council for allowing me to speak this morning, this afternoon, excuse me. I'm here on behalf of the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce, our Board of Directors, and our members, and I would like to express our concerns regarding the proposed measure to adopt the source of income resolution. While we acknowledge and appreciate the well-intended purpose of this measure, we believe it is not the best approach for addressing the underlying issues related to housing and economic growth in our community. We understand that the primary goal of this measure is to ensure fair and equitable housing for all residents, particularly those who rely on housing vouchers and other forms of government assistance. This is a noble and important objective, and we support efforts to create a more accessible and supportive housing environments. However, we must also consider the potential unintended consequences of adopting SOI discrimination laws. Landlords are likely to face additional administration and compliance burdens, including more paperwork, inspections, and delays in receiving payment. This could deter landlords from participating in voucher programs, ultimately reducing availability of rental housing. Some landlords might choose to exit the rental market or convert rental properties to other uses to avoid the complexities associated with accepting vouchers. We are concerned that adoption could lead to a decrease in the overall supply of rental housing, compounding the housing shortage. The costs associated with maintaining compliance with voucher programs, such as property upgrades to meet inspection standards, can be significant. These costs might be passed on to tenants in the forms of higher rent, making housing less affordable for everyone. In our Vitality Lincoln Strategic Plan, we identified housing as a key need for workforce and economic growth. We have supported several initiatives related to affordable housing, and we remain committed to addressing this critical issue. However, we believe the proactive measure that supports businesses and economic growth are essential. While we share the goal of ensuring fair housing for all, we believe that adopting SOI discrimination laws may not lead to the desired outcome envisioned by proponents. Instead, we advocate for solutions that encourage landlord participation in voucher programs, provide incentives for affordable housing development, and support economic growth. There seems to be a lot of speculation on the possible outcomes of this resolution. The Chamber believes that the policy made based on thorough, data-focused solution results in better, more sustainable outcomes. We urge the Lincoln community to vote against the measure on the May ballot, allowing us the necessary time to engage in a comprehensive conversation. We recommend to the council and proponents to commission an impact analysis, which includes input and perspectives from property owners, to fully understand the impact of this ordinance. We believe that doing so may provide alternatives that expand housing or access to housing while avoiding the negative outcomes from this proposal. This will enable us to proactively address the issues across all price points and ensure the protection of affordable housing in Lincoln. That's all that I have for prepared testimony. If you have any questions, I can take that now.
Does anyone have questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else coming forward? Either microphone.
Either one.
Okay.
Hi there. I am Jess Keisky, 1200 South 20th Street. As some of you are probably aware, I am actually a landlord, and I have chosen to join other housing advocates in support of this because I believe that this is necessary to ensure that more Lincolnites actually have access to housing that they can afford. I don't think that, you know, you guys need to be told that housing is unaffordable for many people in Lincoln. I also don't think that you guys are unaware of the issue of homelessness that many face in Lincoln. Nationwide, there's over 771,000 people that are homeless. That was actually in 2024, and that was just at their point of count. That's one day out of the year. Many of those people probably go uncounted. It's worse than that. Homelessness was actually up from 2023 in those 2024 figures. Families saw 39% increase in homelessness. One in five people that were homeless were over the age of 55, and homeless disproportionately affected people of color, who made up 39% of that homeless population. I'm not just talking about homeless folks today, though. There are a lot of people that their housing is just simply unaffordable to them, and things like housing vouchers, things like Social Security and disability income, which landlords can currently, you know, discriminate against those folks based on what their lawful source of income is, doesn't necessarily count as income when they're figuring in what they can afford for housing. I just want to highlight some of the financial benefits of being a landlord. The income that's generated from rent for a lot of us is actually considered passive income, which means that it's not subjected to the self-employment taxes that most self-employed folks pay. That's 15%, and that funds things like Social Security and Medicare. I can avoid capital gains taxes if I do things right, like a 1031 transfer, and I can continue to invest in property without really increasing my contributions in federal taxes. I can write off improvements, maintenance, business expenses, stuff like that. I can even take advantage of some of your local programs, like the rental rehab program that provides $15,000 per unit to make improvements to properties. But I could still, like, shift the burden of the to the local taxpayers by saying, "Hey, I'm not going to accept these folks that are paying with housing vouchers. I'm not going to accept these folks that are paying with the very programs that I'm also not contributing as much to." Another thing that I know a few landlords have taken advantage of is the urban development loans. Those are no-interest loans that are available to certain people, and some of those landlords actually hold a couple million dollars worth of real estate. But yes, they can deny somebody who is paying with a housing voucher. I'm not going to name names. I just, I feel like by allowing landlords to discriminate against people that pay with vouchers, and this also includes people that pay with child support, this includes people that pay with self-employment income, this is just, we're talking about the source of income here. When we allow landlords to discriminate, what we've done is we have said, "We believe that housing is a commodity instead of a need." We have financialized and commodified housing. You have the opportunity to make sure that housing is accessible to more people in Lincoln by passing this ordinance. And if this goes to the voters, then you're saying, "Hey, we think that people's needs should be voted on." You're passing this on to Lincoln voters and saying, "Hey, do you want to make sure that these people's needs are met?" With that, I would take any questions you might have.
Do any councils have questions?
I have a question.
Councilman Bowers.
So I've heard conflicting, and since you're a landlord, I'm going to ask you this question. So since Section 8 has its own inspection and habit standards that differ from Lincoln City standards, does this policy require all landlords to bring all of their units up to Section 8 standards? Or does this mean that they just would not be able to accept Section 8 dollars if their units are not up to what Section 8 would require?
It would mean that they wouldn't have to accept Section 8 dollars if their unit wasn't up to what Section 8 would require.
So what I'm hearing you say is that if this passes, then this means that all landlords would not have to then bring up their units to Section 8 standards?
That's correct. And currently, duplexes and single-family dwellings are only, those are only inspected on a complaint basis. So there's a lot of substandard housing that isn't currently being inspected by Lincoln City employees that is, you know, not going to qualify as for Section 8.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. Anybody else?
Councilman Dood.
Consider child support to be stable income?
Well, it's part of the income that makes living affordable and raising children affordable. Whether it's stable, I guess, it depends on whether the person paying the child support is, has stable employment and is consistently paying that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Keisky? Good afternoon and welcome. The microphone is on your right or your left. Thank you.
Hi, my name is River Sky. I live at 1724 D Street, Apartment 2. I am a Section 8 tenant. I am part of the Lincoln Fair Housing Coalition, and I would like to take this opportunity to shift the Overton window a little bit, if I can, on this discussion. There has been a lot of concerns from landlord interests, folks that are doing just fine. The landlords have a safe place to live, they're financially stable, they are not facing the type of fears and difficulties that a poor tenant like myself faces. And there is a lot of discussion in this society about burdens and unfairness to the people who are already doing fine. I've heard discussion about landlords being forced to comply with things, but as a tenant, as an applicant, I'm forced to comply with all kinds of things. Red tape, do you have any idea how much red tape is involved in even getting a housing voucher? Do you know the expense, the time, the stress and fear and uncertainty? And if you're raising a child, if you have a pet, if you are a person who is vulnerable, who is disabled, these are reasons that people are poor and seeking these are reasons that people are poor and seeking help. These are the people whose burdens we need to be talking about. The ones who truly, deeply suffer from the burden, not the ones who have the ink in their accounting books shifted from one part of the black to another part of the black. But the people are deep in the red and trying to survive, physically survive. And we're hearing about the burden to someone who is doing well enough to be running a business. We're hearing about, we shouldn't have to, landlords shouldn't have trauma response here. This is my complex PTSD. This is why I'm disabled and on voucher in the first place. We're talking about landlords having to follow regulations. But these regulations are for basic safety things. These are, paperwork has got to be part of running any business. You expect it. You plan it into your business model. As far as, do we want our units to have to pass inspection? These are not weird, far-fetched inspections. These are safety issues. Does it have a fire alarm? Is there water damage to the point of having mold and mildew? Is there infestations? Is there a secure lock on the door? Do the windows work? Can a person get out if there's a fire? These are the kind of things that the inspection, I have had these inspections done. These are the kinds of things that they call for. Just, is it a safe and clean and decent place to live? But the other thing is businesses have to follow regulations all the time. We could say, "Oh, well, it's not fair." Someone wants to, if people wanting, running a restaurant, it's not fair that they have to have inspections. It's not fair they have to let the health department in. It's not fair the employees have to have a food handler permit. It's not fair they have to pass a fire marshal. It's not fair that elevators have to be inspected. It's not fair that liquor places have to have a liquor license. It's not fair that businesses have to follow ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act, and be accessible. It's not fair that there are regulations that you can't block the fire exit with extra shelves. It's not fair, says the business. And the next thing we know, it's, now we're saying, suddenly, this is different. This only seems different because it's not what we're already doing. It only seems weird. It only seems like an extra burden because this is what it should have been all along, but it hasn't, and we're not used to it. Everything that's new is uncomfortable. Learning to use someone's pronouns is uncomfortable. Learning to use my own pronouns, that I use both they and them and she and her, that has taken me years to get used to that. For myself, everything that's new feels like it's an extra thing. But this is where this should have been the baseline. And I ask each of you from my heart, please just take us to square one, so we can all have a home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sky. Is there anyone else wanting to come forward to speak on this item?
Hello, I'm Victory Clafter. I wrote my address down. I live in the South Salt Creek neighborhood. I'm going to tell a story that I've told at least twice on this mic. Now I get a third time. It's been some years, but the issue is still not solved. In 2020, 2021, I was doing outreach to folks who were about to have an eviction hearing, letting them know that there were free attorneys at the courthouse who could talk through their issue and help get them connected to rental assistance. I approach a house, and I hear the sound of, like, kids inside. I knock really loud. I'm a really quiet knocker, so I knock again. I know that someone's in there. I know they need this information. The guy ends up, he opens the door a little bit. He looks just exhausted and, like, scared of me. I show him some materials. He opens up the door a little bit more. We start talking about what's going on. And I ask, you know, "Are you looking for a new place? Is it a matter of money? Are you behind on this one?" And he's like, "I've had a voucher for two and a half months. I've called 200 places. No one will take me. I've got three kids. He went through a divorce. They had a little dog." And the dog is, like, running around, being super friendly. And he's like, "And they also..." I don't even bring up the dog until we've gotten past the voucher conversation. And he said, "I got the dog after the divorce. Like, what do I tell my kids? I got to surrender the dog, but even if I surrender the dog, I've already called 200 places and been turned down by all of them." And got his info, you know, remind him, "Go to the eviction hearing. At least do that. We'll see where we're at." And then I just completely, he's lost to the ether. I texted him, called him. I think a number changed. He didn't go to the hearing. I have no idea what happened to him. And I think about him a lot. And I think about how maybe not 200 places would have said yes, but if we had passed this four, five years ago, there's no way that 200 places would have said no. That guy would have gotten in somewhere, and his kids would have been in a home. Another person I'm thinking about worked for different employment services, like helping people get jobs. She helped make a mobile job fair happen during the pandemic. She was a visionary in it. She made it happen when people did not know what to do, had it running out at the mall. She worked for different nonprofits around here, doing housing assistance and landlord liaison. She was an incredible person who was, had helper, like, down to her bones. She lost her voucher that she used on a technicality. It was going to be about $1,500, $2,000 in order to get restored, in order to get back on the waitlist. She could not scrounge that up and had moved around a bunch of times, paying for homes that were exorbitantly expensive because they knew she had no other options with her four children and one kid who couldn't even live with them because they didn't have space. And she now has left Nebraska. And we lost her. We lost this incredible community pillar because she could not, this, it is already hard enough to get the voucher. She, she would have been a perfect tenant. She works with landlords all the time. She took that extremely seriously. And it was a technicality based on how many kids were living with her. There is no issue that has made me lose more respect for members on this council than how you've handled housing issues and the runaround and the passing the buck on this issue specifically in the past few years. You've done a number of positive things. But a home is the central, the central pillar of a safe community. And when we talk about other kinds of discrimination or divisiveness, people who don't have their basic needs met are way more likely to find another person to pin that issue on, whether it's a gay person or a person of color, an immigrant. This is a, a community protection far beyond the family that you're helping to house. This is also protecting the other folks who become the scapegoat of that totally understandable anger and despair when you can't house your own family. We know this works. Other people have the data. Just do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clafter. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward?
My name's Alan Gossman, 1045 North 35th. I actually came for another purpose. But for 50 years, I was a landlord, 167 units, and I had all kinds of tenants. I had Section 8. I had this and that. I saw the changes in HUD, Section 8, over the years also. And I didn't ever turn anyone down because of Section 8 income purposes. The problem that other landlords and an occasion I had was, back in the, back in the day, HUD would come in and they'd do a thorough inspection. And then at the end, they'd do an inspection and up to $800 worth of damages, which, beyond normal wear and tear, they would cover. But then they stopped doing that. And the problem is, a lot of people obviously don't have much income or, or assets. They just don't. And if there are damages, they can't pay for it. So the landlord gets stuck with it. It's his property or her property, and it needs to be addressed. Now, that might have changed. I haven't had apartments for about 10 years now, maybe a little more. Any rate, I'm in favor of nondiscrimination based on income strictly. Now, if the damages could be addressed, I think a lot of tenant-caused damages could be addressed. I think a lot of the opposition might disappear. I'm not certain. But I'd just say I'm in favor of it. I think it's a good thing. And perhaps the other issues could be addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Gossman. All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this issue? We do have two mics. If I see no one else coming forward, then we'll, all right.
Hi, y'all. My name is Ally Christensen. I'm a community organizer at Civic Nebraska, located at 513 South 13th Street. I always want to say your address, so.
Welcome.
But I'm also a renter in Everett. I live over at 9th and D. And if we, you know, walk outside of this building and we go into the neighborhood we're in, you'll see a lot of the buildings where tenants who are impacted by source of income discrimination live. You'll see families running over to Cooper Park to and from Everett Elementary and McPhee Park Middle School. You'll see the faces, you know, our fellow neighbors who would benefit so greatly if this council took action to enact source of income protections right now. So the city charter, it gives us a really wonderful opportunity. You know, we collected over 15,000 signatures. Over 15,000 Lincolnites said, "Yes, they want to see source of income protection so that everyone has a fair chance at home." And so the city charter gives us that opportunity where you all can either vote to enact this policy now and support families to get into safe and stable housing, or you're obligated to put it on the May 6 ballot, in which case our community will come through. But I just want to remind you of this chance that you have right now, this conversation that we're having right now, where everyday people came to a 3 o'clock meeting in the afternoon during the workday to tell you, "This issue is real, and this policy would help our community. I ask that you vote to enact source of income protections today and be remembered for your dedication to supporting working families, our neighbors, and the blocks surrounding us." And I'm happy to answer any questions, although Casey, I'm sure will answer lots of questions after me, too.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you.
Good afternoon and welcome.
Thank you. Hello, Lincoln City Council. My name is Casey Ogle, K-A-S-E-Y-O-G-L-E. I'm a senior staff attorney at Nebraska Appleseed. Our address is P.O. Box 83613 here in Lincoln. And I, yeah, as I said, I'm a senior staff attorney at Nebraska Appleseed for Collective Impact Lincoln. Nebraska Appleseed is a nonprofit organization that fights for justice and opportunity for all Nebraskans. Collective Impact Lincoln is a partnership between Nebraska Appleseed and Civic Nebraska that works with residents of six Lincoln neighborhoods to build community, develop neighborhood leaders, and take action on policy that is responsive to their needs. Excuse me. I'm here today on behalf of Collective Impact Lincoln in support of the Lincoln for Fair Housing ballot initiative. We believe in a Lincoln that is a strong, vibrant community whose residents are secure in their homes and able to thrive. All Lincolnites deserve a decent, safe home where they can afford to live, care for their families, and enjoy a good quality of life. Unfortunately, this is not a reality for too many of our neighbors. According to the city's Affordable Housing Coordinated Action Plan, 45 census tracts in the city have at least 40% of renters paying more than 30% of their income to rent. Nearly half of all renters in the city are cost-burdened by their housing situation, and 11,280 Lincoln households are extremely cost-burdened by their housing. With so little left after housing costs, many of our neighbors are sacrificing basic necessities like food and healthcare just to make ends meet. Discrimination on the basis of source of income and housing exacerbates our already dire housing situation. Source of income discrimination in housing happens when a landlord turns down a prospective tenant because of how the tenant would pay their rent. A common example of this is when a landlord refuses to accept Section 8 or housing choice vouchers as a form of payment. But this is a problem that also plagues recipients of Social Security or disability benefits, single moms who rely on child support payments, and even hourly workers without a guaranteed monthly salary. Right now, Lincoln offers no protection to those families seeking to find housing that will accept their voucher, allowing landlords to impose unfair conditions or outright refuse to rent to them solely based on how they would pay rent. In fact, nearly one in three voucher recipients have to return their voucher because they can't find a landlord who will accept it. Just look around Lincoln's apartment listings, and you'll see no Section 8, no LHA, and no vouchers. All around, the discrimination against Lincolnites using housing assistance programs is no secret, and it hurts our communities. You heard earlier from the Lincoln Chamber about their concern about this may not be the solution, but what good is affordable housing if people can't rent it? Even if we build more housing, it won't matter if landlords keep rejecting renters based on income source. This ordinance removes unnecessary barriers so that housing can actually serve the people who need it. And as you've heard from other people today, this is not a new policy. It's not novel. It's been enacted in over 20 cities and over 120, or sorry, over 20 states and over 120 cities and municipalities across the country. It's, it's a proven solution to this issue. And widespread rent hikes have not, have not been seen in those places. In reality, most landlords are still going to price their units based on what the market can bear. Ending source of income discrimination will provide a minimum level of protection for those working hard to build a better life in Lincoln. These protections will also make Lincoln a more inclusive city and reduce segregation in our community because source of income discrimination allows landlords to engage in the worst kinds of racial discrimination, refusing to rent properties in desirable areas to communities of color while blaming their decision on economic factors other than race. Statistics prove that source of income discrimination disproportionately impacts Black and Latino renters. Creating protections from source of income discrimination in housing is essential for reducing racial segregation, discrimination and segregation in Lincoln. This is an issue that has been long discussed, and this solution is long overdue. According to the city charter, this council now has a choice. You can either enact the policy as it is, or you can refer it to the May ballot to let the people of Lincoln vote on it. We know this is a good policy, supported by Lincolnites, and proven to improve outcomes for tenants relying on housing vouchers. For these reasons, we think you should simply enact this policy today. But if you choose not to, you must then refer this to the May ballot and give Lincolnites the opportunity to improve our community and pass this policy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ogle. Do any councilmembers have questions?
I do.
Councilman Bowers, and then I have a question.
I think I have, I think I just have three questions. So we've heard the statistic, one in three voucher recipients have to return their voucher. Can you tell me what the sources for that? Because I, we've heard that multiple times today, but I don't know what that's attributed to.
Yeah, that is, I can get you what the exact was last time I asked from LHA. I think they would be able to supply you with that information as well. That's also the sort of national average. I don't have the source on, at my fingertips. I can certainly email it to you.
So do you know if, like, one in three is for Lincoln specifically? Or is that for Nebraska, or is that the national?
It, it has just tracked. It is the national average. It is also Lincoln's.
Gotcha. And so what I'm hearing you say is that if that is Lincoln's average, and that's also the national average, then Lincoln's on par with other cities of our size, then?
I would say it, it matches the national average. So Lincoln has a same average. So Lincoln has a same-average number of folks who have to turn in their voucher as the rest of the U.S.
Awesome. And then the other... The last question that I have is because, again, I feel like I've gotten kind of conflicting information on this is... So as I'm reading your statement here, this then would not require landlords to bring their units up to Section 8 standards?
Yes.
So, like, I think one standard that's different is in... And I... This could be incorrect, but Lincoln requires that there's a smoke detector nearby, and I believe that Section 8 requires that there's a smoke detector in each bedroom, right? And so if someone's seeking a unit with a Section 8 housing voucher, they still would not be able to rent to that unit if there's not the smoke detector in every room, right? So if that unit does not meet HUD standards, then the landlord still does not... would not be able to rent to that person, then?
Yes. But what I envision would happen was is that the landlord would not be able to turn the tenant away because of how they would pay rent. The landlord would start the process to go through and have the unit inspected by LHA, and then LHA would come back and say, "Your unit doesn't pass inspection. You need to fix it up." And if they fail to do so, LHA would then say, "We cannot allow you to rent the prospective tenant. We can't allow you to rent this unit because it doesn't meet our standards."
So would the landlord then be in violation if their unit does not meet that standard?
No, I would say no because they haven't turned the tenant away because of the way that they would pay their rent. They've gone through the process. They've engaged in a good faith effort.
Okay. Because I think one of my concerns, and again, I haven't had this answered, but maybe this answers it if not all units have to meet Section 8 standard, is, you know, there's other organizations that pay housing, right? And one scenario that I was envisioning is, like, if a religious organization was paying someone's housing, right? And then essentially forcing landlords to then have, like, crosses in every room of their house, right? And then that being the person who's then the renter then be... have to then have that kind of religious decoration up if that's not the religion that they practice, right? And so that's kind of been one of the things that I've been concerned about. But what I'm hearing you say, though, is that landlords do not have to then meet the standards that the funding organizations lay out.
I would say that they can't turn... What this does is just say that they can't turn someone away because of how they would pay their rent. And so if there's some sort of inspection requirement that then goes through, and the unit fails, and the funding organization makes the decision that they won't fund it, then that's their decision and not the landlord's decision.
Does the inspection happen before they move in?
For LHA, it does.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Duden, then I...
I've got a question. You said that a lot of people are turned away because they can't find rent. Or are they turned away because they can't find it, or is it because of other reasons? Because you're making it sound like there's a lot of rejection out there because of form of payment. And I met with housing authority. I went there myself to research this topic as much as I could, and they told me that sometimes people's circumstances changed. They changed jobs. They moved out of town. So it wasn't always an unused voucher because of not finding a place. It was because of other circumstances as well.
I would say that those happen occasionally, but that I would imagine that LHA doesn't always hear about the tenant who's doing a housing search and has seen all the listings that say "don't even apply." So there is, on its face, a lot of rejection of the housing choice voucher, "don't even apply." Landlords will advertise it. It's not a secret. It's very public. Sometimes things do happen where maybe someone's circumstances change after they've gotten the voucher. Things like that could happen. But the vast majority, I think, are folks who are trying... I mean, you've heard stories today about folks who call hundreds of landlords to try to find someone who will accept their voucher and who lost their voucher because they weren't able to find someone who would.
Going back to Councilman Bowers's question, if a landlord isn't going to upgrade the features that are necessary for housing, wouldn't it be a waste of time?
No, I don't think it would be a waste of time.
You don't want to go through the rules and regulations of the housing authority?
Well, that's an interesting question. I think landlords... I think a lot of the complaints I hear are about these inspection requirements, and I think those inspection requirements... I think I would agree with the premise in some ways of your question in that folks might be able to know whether or not their unit will pass inspection upfront. But I think a lot of the arguments that we hear are that we have no idea, and it's impossible to figure out whether or not my unit will pass inspection. So I'm... I don't necessarily agree that it would be a waste of time, though I certainly see where you're coming from. I think it's important that they engage in that sort of back-and-forth. The landlord, I think it's in their interest to improve the unit, to ensure that it meets housing-quality standards, to ensure that their units are safe and livable. As you've heard before, it's their very basic sort of safety requirements. And so I think in general, that goes to the interest of the landlord as well.
Good understanding of that. I've had one house that I rent. I had a woman in there for 13 years, started off with vouchers, and finally got to the point where she could afford the rent by herself. And actually, I had to ask her to move so I could remodel the place.
Sure.
I've got a family in there now that is on vouchers. Family from Afghanistan, and dad, the father, was an Afghan soldier fighting alongside U.S. Special Forces, and they're great tenants. But, you know, that was... It's all... So far, it's been all my choice to participate in vouchers. And I appreciate the inspections because I want a safe environment for my tenants. Frankly, I don't think we do enough in Lincoln to make sure our facilities are safe for tenants. But that's another issue that...
Certainly. And I agree with you on that, Councilman Duden, and would love to work with you on it. Thank you.
Ms. Ogle, I have a question pertaining to the other part of this ordinance, proposed ordinance, that says this pertains to rent and purchase. So can you tell me a little bit about source-of-income discrimination with buying property or selling property or implementing a loan or giving a loan? Can you tell me how that works?
I can tell you that this just ensures that no one, regardless of renting or buying, is going to be able to be turned away because of how they would pay for that. So how they would buy the home, how they would purchase the home. And that it's, I think, a feature of the Lincoln, the Fair Housing Act that exists within Title 11 within Lincoln. Renting and buying, discrimination in renting and buying is fairly intertwined in how those things are protected within that act. And so I think it's a feature that is in common with many other places that have already enacted these protections. I don't think we hear about those stories as much because we don't... I don't think it's as widespread of an issue. So beyond that, I'm not sure.
Okay. Because I'm certainly familiar with the issue of source-of-income around rental. I had not thought about it around purchasing. I have paid attention to, I mean, historically redlining. And so, you know, not being able to get a loan or to purchase a property because of race or gender or marital status. So I'm... I guess I have some questions about whether or not this pertains to, like, mortgage companies. So a mortgage company needs to accept... A voucher isn't part of the process.
It says that someone can't be turned away because of how they would purchase the home.
Right.
So I'm not entirely sure that it applies to mortgage companies. It applies to... I think it... I'd have to double-check the language, but my understanding is that it applies to the purchase of the home. And there might be something also about the income and how that might be evaluated for a mortgage. But I would, again, need to look at the language of the ordinance, which I'm happy to do and get back to you.
Yeah, that was my only question.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilman Weber?
Thank you, Chair Washington. That line of questioning got me thinking. And Ms. Ogle, thank you so much for coming down here today and testifying. Thank you to everyone who took time out of their day to testify on this issue. So speaking about this proposed language by ordinance, right? And I'm asking you, just because you're an attorney with Collective Impact, can you speak about the process that Collective Impact or the Coalition went through with drafting this ordinance?
Um, yeah. Yes.
And I guess the reason I ask is, it's my understanding that this could become, you know, whether we enact it today, whether we... the voters approve it on a ballot, that this would be one of the first, if not the first, ordinance not written by city law, right? The city legal department. I think about in the Nebraska Legislature, for example, every piece of legislation that comes through has, you know, goes through the bill-writing process, right? And so this is unique in that example. So I was just curious if you could speak to the process of how this language was drafted? Because I think Chair Washington's question is a good one, and it makes me curious of the process behind this.
Yeah, absolutely. I think also to sort of go off of your example of the state legislature, I think that the initiative process exists there. So there certainly are laws that have been passed that do not go through there, but also through the initiative process. And I understand this would be somewhat unique for Lincoln, something of a first. I think the process involved a lot of research, consideration, looking at how other places have done this, considering what already exists in city... in our city ordinances, and finding a way to draft it that we felt would accomplish our policy goals, would accomplish the goal of banning source-of-income discrimination, that goal.
I appreciate that. And so the legal team that drafted this used existing ordinance that had been passed in other states, other cities?
Yeah. And I would say also, this has been a long, ongoing conversation with this body as well. And I think there has been some... Had in previous years been some back-and-forth between some members of the city law department and in looking at what something like this might look like for Lincoln.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from councilors? Thank you very much, Ms. Ogle.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else here in chambers who'd like to address council? All right. A couple more folks have risen.
Hi. I'm... Good afternoon. This is the first time here, so hi. I'm Isaac Rumbold. I signed in on the sign-in sheet, so my address will be recorded there.
Okay.
I just got off work, so I ran over here because I had four people text me, "Hey, can you come down and testify on this initiative?" And I just wanted to say I was one of the petitioners. I contributed to this effort, and I'm in support of it. But one thing I'd... One experience I had was, it was really cold last January, I believe. And a lot of these signatures were actually obtained in that cold weather. So that kind of goes to show that, like, people were really motivated to sign this petition. And I think that number probably could have been even higher if we had really nice weather. But I'm not an expert on that. But a thing that I've heard sometimes is that to make decisions specifically on housing or other issues in the city, we need more data. I'm a data guy, but in my opinion, 15,000 signatures is a pretty good data point to work off of. So I think that kind of is a good data point to work from as far as just moving forward with this today. If it goes to the ballot, I would definitely vote for it. But I have a few things I wrote down on the way here. Some things from the Comprehensive Plan, which is to provide housing choices within existing and developed neighborhoods. It's in the first policy of the Comprehensive Plan. I think this... It's housing choice, I think, is in the language. But I'm not a great public speaker, so I'm, like, forgetting it right now. But another thing is, I always say this, whenever housing comes up, UNHuman... UNHuman Rights says housing is a human right. I think this contributes to that. It just helps to improve housing choices for everybody in the city. But that's all I'll say. I just wanted to say I support it and wanted to come and say some stuff. So appreciate you guys listening to me ramble there for a bit. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rumbold. Anyone else? Well, thank you very much for all of you coming down to testify. I do appreciate how much people are committed to this and willing to let their voices be heard. Thank you. Do you want to testify?
I would like to say...
Wait until you please... If you wouldn't mind, wait till you come to the mic so that everyone can hear you.
Okay. I would like to say I have a voucher, too, and I've been running around looking for a place. It comes to my concern that a lot of homes is antique homes. So housing try to come in with the little money they're going to give landlords and make them get new doors or new windows or tin his wall down and make this more room. And it's not fair to the landlord if they want to do these type of things, you know what I mean? Because they don't have the money, first of all. That's why they're accepting a lot of tenants who don't accept housing. You know what I mean? Because housing come in and try to make them rearrange everything that they put in work for as antique. And years later, they want this out. They want this wider. They want this new. And it's not fair to the landlords when the window work and the door work itself. You know what I mean? They can use a little paint job or whatever, but I think they're doing it like that, and it's making it harder for the landlords to rent to the tenant when it's an antique home anyway.
Okay. Would you mind giving us your name?
I'm sorry. My name is Timothy Jones.
Mr. Jones. All right.
So I was hoping that we accept what they have. And if you want to make it better for them, help them make it better by putting the tenants in there and writing them a check. Because the door work, the window work, it doesn't... It's all safety as far as it's in there, everything in there, and everything worked. It's just not Home Depot door. The door they might have this new at their home or at their business office that he doesn't have, and he has to suffer because it's not that door. But if we want to give him that door, let's write him a check and put the tenant in there because they really did nothing wrong. They still on the streets, and he did remeet the code. It's just antique.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. And I would like to also address as what goes on in our neighborhood with our housing, which we see all the people came here and noticed it's a big problem. And we also have a problem with law enforcement, which attached to housing because we can't get housing. So we have more problems with law enforcement agencies out there. We have a problem as I submitted these sheets. I don't know if y'all all see it. I submitted these sheets on here.
Mr. Jones, if you'd like to speak on an issue besides the issue on the dais right now, you can come back at the end of the meeting and bring us that issue.
All right.
All right. Thank you. All right. With that, I'll close this public hearing. We'll move into the voting section on public hearing resolutions and proceed with the meeting.
I'll call item 5A, Pre-existing Special Permit 23K, application of Nebraska Wesleyan University to Pre-existing Special Permit 23J to expand the Nebraska Wesleyan University campus to include the property formerly known as the Alpha Gamma Delta Sorority, a property located at 25... located at 2541 North 50th Street, introduced by Beckius.
So moved. I'll second.
Second. Carlson, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, please.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5B is correcting the legal description of the use permit area by repealing and replacing Resolution Number A94987, introduced by Beckius.
So moved. Second.
Second. Carlson, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5C is directing submittal to the qualified electors of the city a proposed ballot question for the May 6, 2025 general election to adopt or reject an amendment to Title 11 of the Lincoln Municipal Code to prohibit discrimination and renting or buying housing in the city of Lincoln based on the basis of a person's lawful source of income, introduced by Beckius.
So moved. I'll second.
Second. Carlson, is there any discussion? Then I will. First, I know that a number of people have come here today specifically asking us to vote this into law by ordinance. And I know that I received certainly a number of emails asking the same. You're all correct in saying that we had two choices laid out for counsel in our charter rules under initiative, either to enact it into law without any amendment, or to move it to the ballot. This afternoon, we have put forward a resolution to move it into the ballot. We won't be voting on whether or not to enact it into law, but I thought I would make that very clear to folks who thought that there might be another choice here. I really appreciate the fact that we've had a very robust conversation this afternoon in this public hearing. And maybe this is a conversation that is not exactly what you were looking for, because you wanted more back and forth. But, I really do appreciate the folks who've come down and spoken on this issue. I also appreciate that this has been years for some folks who've been working on this issue. The petitioners did exactly what the initiative process laid out. You collected the signatures and brought it to us. And this afternoon, we will be voting to move this to the ballot if it passes. That is the resolution in front of us. Thank you for your participation, for your interest in seeing this work be done, and for being engaged in our process. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Thank you. We will move on to Section 6 Public Hearing on Ordinances, second reading.
I'll call item 6A, amending the pay schedule for employee group whose classification is assigned to the pay range which is prefixed by the letter M by changing the pay range for Class 3161 Emergency Communications Head from M05 to M07.
All right. Is there anyone, no, I'm going to make a statement about this.
Let the room clear just a little bit.
Okay, I'll let the room clear for just a moment. Okay. 6A came before us and is on the agenda. We also, I just wanted to let folks know that we will be putting this item on delay of four weeks. But, if there's anyone here today who came to speak on 6A, I will invite you to participate in a public hearing. But, in four weeks, we will also have a public hearing. So, it's moving to delayed, but continued public hearing. And if that is, is anyone here to actually testify on 6A?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would make a motion to delay action with continued public hearing until April 7.
Okay. Thank you for that motion. Thank you, Mr. Duden, for the second. Any discussion, councilors? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read, read the roll?
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Oh, she, did she? I, did you, I'm so sorry, if I jumped and you did not get a chance to read this into the record?
She did.
All right. All right. I think we can move on. You've moved this, we'll see this back on April 7.
I'll call item 6B, amending the pay schedule for employee group whose classification is assigned to the pay range which is prefixed by the letter W by changing the pay range for Class 2255 Human Rights Manager to W02 to W04.
Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Yohansey Christie, City Attorney, 555 South 10th. This is a position that is, that runs the, runs and is in charge of the Commission on Human Rights, which is the division within the Law Department. There is one employee currently in that position. That employee is also an attorney that is in charge of this division. This resolves an internal pay equity, equity issue for us within the Law Department, and this proposed change aligns the pay between Attorney 2 and Senior Attorney. Again, we think this is more in line with where this position is at and what they are asked to do for the Law Department and the City of Lincoln. And we'd ask that you, we'd ask for your support in approving this. Be happy to answer any questions.
I have one question.
Yes.
I appreciate the proposal here. Can you tell me when this would go into effect and how this affects your budget that we passed?
So, we, it would go into effect, I believe, 15 days after the vote, and I think that's approximately April 1. And we did propose and ask for this in our, when we went through the budget process. So.
So, it's already contained within the budget?
We are able to account for this if it is approved. And again, this changes the scale. So, how it would work is that it wouldn't, it's not something that automatically goes into effect. It just, that person who's in that position is now eligible the next time they come around for their yearly evaluation.
All right.
So.
Thank you.
So, they don't get a pay raise?
There may be other, there may be other options that could happen, but once, if this is passed by the council, the way that it works, unless something else, unless there's a request for some sort of, called a special increase, if that doesn't happen, it's not an automatic pay range. They're just eligible the next time they're evaluated. So, it's not a immediate, it doesn't, once it's passed, it doesn't automatically result in a pay range, is what I'm trying to say.
So, they better be doing a good job.
That's right. I, as a director, we have the ability to ask for a special increase for someone, but.
So, but regardless, you've accounted for this in your two-year budget request.
Correct.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I could have just said that. Thank you.
But, I won't make an attorney joke. All right. All right. Thank you. And does Director McIntyre want to talk on this issue as well?
No, I was just. Hi, Barbara McIntyre, Human Resource Director. I was just here in case Yohansey needed any backup with some of those answers, but he did great. That's all right. So, I don't have anything else to add, except HR did do our normal process and review with it. So.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone here in chambers this afternoon who'd like to speak on this issue, either in support or in opposition? All right. Seeing no one, we can move forward.
I'll call item 6C, Text Amendment 25001, application of Gana Venue LLC to amend Lincoln Municipal Code Section 27.62.110, food and drink establishment use group, to exclude golf courses and hiker-biker trails for the conditions required to sell alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises in the B2 and B5 zoning districts.
Members of the council, Derek Zimmerman with the Baylor Evanon Law Firm, 1248 O Street, Suites 900, here in Lincoln, 68508, here on behalf of the proposed text amendment ordinance to exclude golf courses and hiker-biker trails from conditions required to sell alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises in the B2 and B5 districts. And I was here previously on behalf of Venue 522 LLC with respect to its liquor application. And as noted, this was a condition of approval. So, we're back here to finish up that loop, close it, second step here today. And this is, the event space is located at 1525 Yankee Hill Road, and the property, it butts Wilderness Ridge Golf Course. And so, it's zoned residential. So, even though there's no residences there, it does trigger the distance requirement technically. The remainder of the ordinance does already take into account golf courses and excludes it. It just doesn't for B2 and B5. So, I view this as a cleanup item, because it's already been taken care of before with others. And so, we're just here today to loop in B2 and B5. On consent agenda and for a planning commission passed unanimously, was not pulled from consent. And so, staff's recommending approval. So, we're here just asking for your approval and moving forward. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from councilors? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Zimmerman. All right. Is there anyone here in chambers who'd like to speak on this item? All right. Madam Clerk, let's proceed.
I'll call items 6D and 6E together, Annexation 25001, application of Roca Bee Investments LLC and Southview Inc. to annex approximately 67 acres of property generally located southwest of South 84th Street and Roca Bee Road, and the related Change of Zone 25004, application of Roca Bee Investments LLC and Southview Inc. to change the zoning designation from AG Agricultural to R3 Residential over approximately 60 acres on the property generally located at southwest of South 84th and Roca Bee Road.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Mike Hecart with Still Design Group, Lincoln, Nebraska, 8535 Executive Woods Drive, Suite 200. These are some land south of Roca Bee Road, down by 84th Street. It was included in the Roca Bee Road Coalition Annexation Agreement, which was originally done clear back in '07, updated in 2017, and how time flies. Back then, we thought for sure we'd be through this property, but here we are. So, a pretty standard annexation agreement that includes this land. So, we were on consent at planning commission and would ask for your approval for the annexation and change of zone.
Time does fly, doesn't it?
It does.
Do any councilors have questions on this item? Well, thank you. Is there anyone here in chambers who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll proceed.
I'll call item 6F, Change of Zone 25001, application of Lost Bridge Crossing LLC to change the zoning designation from H2 Highway Business District, H3 Highway Commercial District, and R2 Residential District to RT Residential Transition District, a property generally located at 1045 North 35th Street.
All right. Good afternoon. Welcome. Mr. Carey?
Good afternoon. David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. I also have Paul Barnes with me here today, representing the Long Range Division of our department. I just kind of want to give a, kind of a broad overview of kind of the next several items that are on your agenda, just to give some context to it. We will have standalone hearings for the next two items that are officially changes of zone, that are related to a larger package that are later on list of items for you to consider today, which is related to the H2 zoning district changes that we've been working on for several months now. Want to put in context that these proposed changes of zone, the one of which that we're in front of you right now for, are to provide for an opportunity in H2 that's going to be focused on the 48th and O Street area of our city, for the opportunity for some true mixed-use development that includes residential, that up until now, we haven't allowed residential in the H2 zoning district. Really feel like there's an opportunity to allow for investment in improvements and changes in that area of the city that could become much more dynamic than it is today. So, that is really the big picture, purpose behind all these items that are in front of you today. So, with that, I'm going to hand, hand it off to Paul to kind of walk through the next two zoning, proposed zoning changes, and then we will get into the larger package of the text amendments.
All right. Paul Barnes, Manager of Long Range Planning, 555 South 10th Street. So, we have a couple graphics here to show you. This is addressed at 1045 North 35th Street and is, David had noted, this all is in context of H2 zoning amendments. We did have two kind of outlier H2 zone properties that weren't centered around 48th and O, and these are the two that we're going to be looking at. So, this is North 35th Street up here. Apple is the east-west, and then Idlewild would be further up north towards Holdridge. There is a combination of zoning pattern here that's somewhat interesting, most of which we believe is kind of related to the railroad, the MOPAC that's to the south, and just kind of how things have changed over time. So, we do have today existing H3 zoning as well as, which is contiguous to this H3 to the south. So, this portion here is H3 today. This corner kind of pie shape is H2. And then, we have these two pieces, excuse me, to the west that are currently RT, or, excuse me, R2. Basically, the surrounding neighborhood is R2 as well. What we're proposing to do is to change these three districts all to RT, which is a residential transitional zoning district. In a planning sense, this is more or less kind of a perfect example of where an RT zoning district should be located. Since we have H3 heavier commercial to the south, and we have R2 residential surrounding this property, a transitional residential zoning district is appropriate. I do want to note a couple other items with this, that from an H3 and H2 to an RT zoning district, there are going to be less permissive uses. However, on the R2 to RT sections, there's going to be more uses allowed on that piece of property. RT does allow for single-family, two-family dwellings, as well as commercial uses such as offices, daycares, and personal services. I can move on to the next item if there aren't any questions.
I do have a question.
Yeah, I think there will be some questions. Go ahead, Councilman Beckius.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes, for coming down today. Appreciate it very much. The application states that this is a proposal, or, sorry, our agenda states that this is a proposal, an application on behalf of Lost Bridge Crossing LLC, but my understanding is that this is an application from the Planning Department?
Yes. So, this was a package that was initiated by the Planning Department.
Okay.
I believe Lost Bridge is the owner of these two parcels that you see here.
Yes. It looks like it is the owner. I was just, under the impression by the agenda here, that this is an application on behalf of the owner, but I believe the owner's here today and has contacted me in opposition to these proposed changes. So, I just wanted to make sure that's accurate. And can you, Mr. Barnes, speak to continued existing usage going forward, should this package of zoning changes be implemented? There's currently use of a building and a use of that building on the land today. Can you speak to how that building can be used going forward?
Well, if there's an active use today, it could continue even with different zoning that wouldn't allow it. That would be legal non-conforming. And there are many options available in our zoning codes, such as a special permit for non-conforming uses, to allow that to continue or expand. With the RT zoning, there would be a number of other uses that would be allowed outside of what's currently allowed in the R2 portion. I mentioned those would be housing, single-family, two-family. There's a number of limited commercial uses as well. So, an office, a daycare, more light commercial uses that are compatible in between a heavier commercial area and next to or across the street from residential. So, there is an impact. Yes.
Sure. Sure. I think that's all I have right now. Thank you.
I have a question. I have a question, based on knowing that this was an application of the planning department, same with the next item. How involved was the property owner in the conversation about this proposal? And did they get a chance to weigh in and say they agree?
Yes, I can speak to that. So we started work on the H2 zoning amendment last year, even before that, actually quite a few years. When we got into the analysis and found that there were some other H2 properties that we were going to look at changing the zoning on, we emailed all impacted properties. We had sent a letter letting them know that we were going to hold a public meeting, which was held last September 10th at Color Middle School. That letter also included our contact information, the project website, you can email us, you can call us, you can come to our office. That was the first letter that went out to property owners. We then kind of, you know, took some time to weigh in and look at our proposal and do further analysis after that. I will mention that we did have one person show up at the public meeting and address their concerns. No one else emailed us or called us about questions or concerns. We then, in I believe January or early February, had sent out another notice to all the affected property owners, just saying, hey, this project is going to come back through the process. It's been a while, we want to make you aware of this. So that was a courtesy letter that we sent out, that was number two. And then for all of those properties that are impacted by the zoning change, they get the standard zoning letter that's required by code that we send out whenever we do a zoning action. So that was the third letter that was sent out. And then we had the planning commission hearing, which of course is open to the public. Letters can be submitted, emails can be submitted, testifiers can come to the public meeting. To our understanding, that hasn't happened with, you know, this property owner. But those were the, those are the outreach efforts that we conducted. Some of it's standard, some of it above what's, what the minimum requirement is.
Okay. Proceed.
I think at this point, I think we probably proceed with the public hearing, and then we'll see if there's any questions after that.
Yes. So we're going to have a public hearing on G, 6G?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Or 6F? Sorry, 6F.
F and then G as well. Yep, thank you.
All right. If there's anyone here in chambers who'd like to come forward on item 6F, please do.
Hello again. Alan Gosman, in regard to 1045 North 35th. I've been a resident of Lincoln since 68 years. I'm 76 now. Lived in that neighborhood. I bought that property 16 years ago as part of my retirement, and for personal uses and so on, for small shop and office and so on. The, I grow fruit trees and I've got a garden there. And there's been no problems there with the current zoning. There's been no, in my estimation, no need to change the zoning. They seem to want to, which will effectively devalue the property considerably. When I spoke to Mr. Jacob, oh, in regard, I'm skipping back, he mentioned that there's been a lot of notifications. I don't, didn't see any September 10th notification. Only one I really saw was February 19th for the public meeting, and unfortunately, I was planning to go, but I got sick. So be it. So I missed that. But I spoke to Jacob and he was kind enough to tell me about this meeting, so here I am. Any rate, back to the value. It's going to knock that value down from the current, according to the Cessar, $440,000, possibly down to $150,000, and that's a big chunk of my retirement, I got to tell you, and I'm not real happy about it. The, I get along good with my neighbors. He talks about, he didn't talk about this other property. There are two properties that got picked out of the ether that they're changing. The other one, mine is a downzone. It's diminishing the value of it. The other one is an upzone. It's the one on 6H there, the property on 48th Street, between 44th and 52nd, and between M and Y. If you would look at a map, there, you probably don't have one in front of you, I just noticed this, that's right up next to a park, McAdams Park. That, I mean, that whole area is mostly residential. I don't know where they're coming up with mine is more, I'm next to a commercial property, H3, which was I3 when I first bought mine, and so was mine. They got downzoned there, which, okay, I didn't argue with that, because it allows from pretty, pretty heavy-duty things. H3, not so much. And I can't see any real reason, if they want to change thing, why should, they shouldn't change all of mine to H3. That's one thing. For H2, the one on 6H, they're changing it to H2 to allow all kinds of opportunities. It has a lot of opportunities in H2. And on the other, other part of the area, once again, it's upzoning and increasing the value of all these properties, quite a bit with all the things that they're allowing. They even changed the parking allotments for those, where they have less need for parking, so they can put more businesses in there. It's, it's going to devalue my property. It's a taking. They're taking away my retirement, for crying out loud. The other thing, it's an odd-sized lot. To try to split it into things that fit with the RT, which is an unusual sort of zoning to start with, it's going to chop it up, and I'm only going to end up with maybe three lots after speaking to Mr. Jacob, which, once again, we're talking, and they'd probably want to tear down the building at that point, which is going to cost $50,000 to $75,000, making it less viable for somebody actually to buy it from me someday. I have no intention of selling it right now. I just want to quietly enjoy my retirement. This is taking it away from me. The, you know, it's, it's just not good. All these other guys, all three of them, or actually many people, they're going to increase in value. And plus, okay, let's go to the LB 866, the legislative thing back in 2020, when they want to increase the population density of the city. 2020 session, Nebraska Legislature, LB 866, they want to create more affordable housing, increase the residential density, increase the density. Ultimately, da-da-da-da, bikeable, there is a bike trail right by there too, efficient land use creating, successful mass transit, affordability, residential neighborhoods. As we've heard tonight, there's a shortage of housing, basically, one of which is causing the rental rates to go up substantially in Lincoln. And I feel sorry for these young people. Man, when I had apartments, $450 was a high rate for a really good apartment, 10 years old or so. Now, my God, $1,000? How do they afford that? I don't know. Fortunately, I don't have to do it. But there are just so many things about this, I just, it's just amazing. They could have called me up, you know, and said, hey, you know, we're thinking about doing this, let's talk. But no, nobody did that. And it's not like there were a lot of properties, we're talking one property here, one owner. It's not a big thing. And granted, Mr. Jacob, I don't know how to say his name, is it Schlangy? Is that his name? Mr. Schlangy, he was kind enough to talk to me and spent time with me and reached no resolution or anything, but at least he did speak to me, as I called him, as opposed to the other way around. As it was pointed out, I did not initiate this. I did not ask for this. I did not want this. But here it is, my lap, and taking my time out, it's been interesting listening to everything here today, but this is not something I really wanted to do. The, in H2, H2 would be a good thing. It would allow all kinds of opportunities for neighborhood revitalization, if somebody chose to do that. And they talk about buffer zone, all around my place, except for one place, which is a ways, they're all duplexes, and there's a multi-unit, and then there's a developmental place. And 200 feet of a commercial, H3. Why does this have to be downzoned to an RT? I don't see the necessity for it. Perhaps they have some, and I can see where they could maybe think so, but I don't see that it should be warranted, and I oppose this stringently. I don't know. Are there any questions?
Counselors? Mr. Beckyus?
Good afternoon. I'm sorry that I haven't had a chance to get back to you yet. I'll call you this week to talk further.
It was short notice.
I'm sorry?
It was short notice.
But I'll call you this week. I do want to talk to you about what I think the highest and best use of your property is. The RT zoning does offer some, some things that I think folks are going to think are compatible with the neighborhood. I, I'm getting a sense from our conversations thus far that the, the potential heartburn may lie in the multifamily dwelling potential of your property, perhaps? Maybe I'm reading into things.
It's diminished, you can't have very many, is my understanding. They could, they could address that better than me.
Yeah, and I think right now, you're not permitted to have any at all in the current zoning, but I'd, I'd have to check that. But I'll give you a call.
The H2 might offer it.
Yeah, I don't think H2 offers multifamily, but I'll get together with you later this week.
These new, new regulations on the H2, it offers all kinds of opportunities, that's a fact.
Yep.
That, whether it is or not, I don't know.
Yep, yep, very good.
I would, yeah, if nothing else, I would appreciate, even if nothing's done today, and I would, I would, I would hope that nothing's done today, that we could have an opportunity with the planning department and, and yourself to discuss this and maybe come up with some sort of resolution that is beneficial to everybody.
Yep.
I mean, I'm not there to upset the neighborhood. I've been around that neighborhood 68 years, you know?
Right, yep. And just so you know, nothing's happening today. A vote on this won't occur until next week.
Okay.
So we have time this week to chat.
Okay, I'm available, except for tomorrow.
Yep.
Okay, anyone else?
No, I, I think that Mr. Beckyus has certainly asked a lot of the questions I was going to ask. I appreciate that. The vote is not today, and it could be delayed further.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item, 6F? Okay, we can proceed with the next item.
I'll read item 6G, change of zone 25002, application of Lincoln Sports Foundation Inc. to change the zoning designation from H2 Highway Business District to H3 Highway Commercial District on property generally located at 7600 North 70th Street.
All right. Good afternoon again, Paul Barnes, Planning Department. What we have here is the other non-contiguous H2 zone property that's in the city today, so not part of the 48th and O Street district. This is actually the former sports complex up on North 70th Street. It's, the boundary is highlighted in this black and white dash line. I'll also note here that this is the northeast sanitary treatment facility, just to the south. This property is owned H2 today, and is being proposed to change to H3. With the H3 changes we're proposing around 48th and O Street, that would include the addition of residential uses. One of the things that we wouldn't like to see on this property is residential that's close to the existing industrial zone property, as well as the sewer treatment facility. We did get in contact with the owners of this property by notice, and were able to have a conversation, and they are supportive of the, the change to H3 here.
And I'll add, just for more context, that, and there was a, a good comment was just made by the owner of the previous property, that, wondering why that, that these properties have been identified. So part of the strategy around the H2 is to remove other H2 that was very limited, but these are the other two locations in the city, so that H2 only exists in that 48th and O area, and to create that special district there. So just to be clear on the strategy of why the changes of zone that we're talking about today are being proposed.
Does, councilors have any questions for either Director Carey or Mr. Barnes? It was good to hear that the property owner is in favor of this change.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right. Is there anyone here this afternoon who'd like to speak on this item, 6G? Mr. Gosman?
Just further on what I indicated before, that H2 zone, which allows all kinds of venues now increased, is once again inclusive of 44th and Y Street, that area which is residential, strictly residential, and a kids' park, McAdams. I mean, how is it that they can put possible liquor stores or venues of restaurants and what have you right there beside that park, but they can't have it over where I am? That's just one example. The other thing, mine, my property is also, if they change it there, there're semis going back and forth constantly through the lumberyard. It's not a problem. They do it, but other people might object to that, so they would not necessarily want to live right there.
Okay.
There's another reason that upzoning would be better than downzoning.
Okay, Mr. Gosman, I thought you were speaking on 6G, and it sounds like you're speaking on 6HI and 6F.
Well, 6, 6, 6B. Yeah.
Yeah.
And how it relates back and forth.
Yes, okay.
That's all.
All right, thank you. We will have a public hearing on 6H and I as well. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on 6G, the property owned by the Lincoln Sports Foundation and its proposed change of zone? All right. Madam Clerk, let's read the next items.
I'll call item 6HI, J and K together. Item 6H through K, change of zone 25003, application of Planning Director to change the zoning designation from B1 Local Business District and B3 Commercial District to H2 Highway Business District for the property generally located at 48th Street and O Street, between 44th and 52nd Street, and between M Street and Y Street. And the related text amendment 25002, application of Planning Department to amend certain sections of Title 27 of the Lincoln Municipal Code related to the HNI zoning districts to eliminate the H1 district and revise the H2 district to encourage mixed-use development to amend sections governing the H3 and I3 districts to promote light industrial uses, to amend the H4 district to achieve consistency with a comprehensive plan, and to correct the use group tables to reflect prior text amendment changes related to on, off-sale alcohol. Text amendment 25002, application of the Planning Department to amend Title III Design Standards for Zoning Regulations by amending section 7.1 and 7.5 in Chapter 3.50 Design Standards for Screening and Landscaping, to remove references to the H1 zoning district and to add a new Chapter 3.120 to adopt the H2 Mixed Use Corridor District Design Standards. And the related text amendment 25002, application of the Planning Department to amend Lincoln Municipal Code Section 10.02350 Sidewalk Space to Acknowledge Public Access Easements Over Sidewalks in Certain Zoning Districts, amending section 12.20.021 Landscape Plantings Within the Sidewalk Space to Refer to the Definition of Sidewalk Space in Title 10, amending section 14.80.010 Space Between Curb and Lot Lines, Designation to Add Language Providing for Adjustments in the Sidewalk Space in the H2 Zoning Districts in the South Hay Market Area, Set Fourth in Design Standards.
All right. Mr. Carey and Mr. Barnes, welcome back.
Thank you, thank you, councilmembers, for some time today. David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. Want to kind of identify that this is the package that's really tied together for the H2 proposal, up for your consideration in hearing today. I think the, the idea here is to have one hearing for all these related items at this point in time today. Again, just want to reiterate that what we've been working on, and I want to do thank Council Member Beckyus for his support of this, through the processes, that's been very helpful as well. The idea here is to create an updated zoning opportunity at, in the general area of 48th and O Street, where H2 exists today, and then also to make changes of zone in some of the B1 and B3 areas that are also located there, so there's one continuous and, and consistent zoning district there. And this, the overarching effort here is to allow for residential to happen in this area that isn't currently, currently allowed. And so that's really the idea there, to allow those opportunities for investment and to have a true mixed-use area in a very important area of our city. So what will happen is, Paul's going to go through a few slides to kind of just show an overview of what we're, what we're proposing, and then we certainly will be available for questions at that point as well. So I'll hand it over to Paul at this time.
All right. Paul Barnes, Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. The map that we have here is outlining the area that we're talking about, really the heart of 48th and O Streets, the H2 district. That's going to be the purple color. And then this darker black line that's outlining includes- And then this darker black line that's outlining includes all of the properties in the H2 text amendment, as well as those B1 and B3 properties that are going to be, or proposed to be rezoned to H2. So it's along O Street from about 40th over to Cotner, and then up 48th to Holdridge Street. Really, there's kind of four or five main bullet points that are in this proposal. The first one is that we'd like to add residential to the H2 zoning district, and also remove some incompatible uses that aren't aligning with residential use. This is in support of a lot of the comp plan recommendations and policies to create a more walkable and mixed-use district. We're also proposing to include streetscape design standards for properties that are located in H2 zoning. We're also proposing to modify alcohol separation in the H2 district that would align more with the B2 and B5 zoning districts. There are some associated changes to the H3, H4, and I3 zoning districts, and then all of the other zoning applications that we're looking at today are all part of this as well. So, in looking at the map again, we're proposing to add residential as a permitted use. Today, it is prohibited. We have heard from the community, from property owners, that in this area in particular, there is interest in developing residential. We've had conversations with those property owners and potential developers. And like I said, it's just not even allowed as a conditional use today. It's outright prohibited. In conjunction with that, though, we're looking at removing some incompatible uses. Those would be sexually-oriented live entertainment, truck wash facilities, and recycling and salvage facilities. So we're making it, again, a mixed-use district, but a balancing of those permitted uses based on where people could live in the future. I'll move on to the streetscape design standard, which is here. So if you, I'm sure you're familiar with 48th and O Streets. It's a high-traffic vehicular area. We have many lanes of traffic here. And a lot of times, the sidewalks that are in public right-of-way are located at the back of curb. And so people that are walking, biking, or rolling are immediately adjacent to a traffic lane on 48th Street or O Street. Those are both major arteries. So what this design standard would do is to encourage that sidewalk be moved off of the curb to provide some refuge and protection from pedestrians or bicyclists in this area. And so the diagram shows that case where a sidewalk is located 10 feet off of the back of curb. That would allow a planting zone, some green space, plant some trees there, and provide more protection for the pedestrians from those travel lanes. I do want to note that some of these properties are rather tight, and so in some cases, we may need to acquire a public easement in order to accommodate the sidewalk at full width 10 feet off of the back of curb. This is something that's been done in other zoning districts. The South Haymarket District comes to mind as one of those that implements this as well. I'll note that this doesn't kick in as a design standard until there's a major redevelopment project, there's a major streetscape project, or the city's doing something that would dig up that space in the public right-of-way. So those are the points that we would look at implementing that standard. Looking over at the alcohol sales requirements, we're highlighting a couple specific examples, and we have heard from these folks. So this is the Fresh International Market. So this is O Street here, and this is 52nd Street, north and south. Currently, in the H2 district, there's a setback requirement of 100 feet measured from the building edge to residential zoning. And you see we have R2 here. There's no way that this grocery store could operate and sell alcohol. But by changing this to be concurrent or in line with B2 and B5, that setback would be measured from the front door of the establishment instead. So that would be one part of the alcohol amendment. The other part here is impacting another specific user. This is the new True Hotel, that's located east of 48th. And this currently cannot meet the separation in H2. So what we're looking at doing here is for hotels in an H2 district, we're going to apply the restaurant separation requirement. So today, hotels need to have 100-foot setback from protected uses such as daycare, which we have located here. And that cannot be met in this case. So looking at the restaurant ability for setbacks, that would be 25-foot setback. And in this case, then, the hotel would meet the separation from the daycare use, and then could have their alcohol permit. Lastly, I'll try to be quick on these. These are some cleanup items. In the H3 district, we are renaming that from Highway Commercial to Heavy Commercial. It was intended to be located along a lot of highways, and that really hasn't happened or evolved over time, so this is more or less a cleanup. There's some minor setback in use updates there. We're deleting the H1 district. We did have a portion of that existing in our community, which no longer does, so that district is being eliminated. H4 has a minor text cleanup in what we call our use groups table. That really has to do with a planned service commercial special permit. And then in I3, this is at the end and shouldn't be diminished by any means, but the I3 district currently requires lot sizes of 30 acres in order to develop. We're proposing that be reduced to five, to allow more flexibility and allow more lighter industrial uses to locate on smaller lot sizes.
And I'll emphasize that point. So the topic of light industrial was a major point of conversation for our update of the comprehensive plan four years ago. This is a follow-up item to implement what we discussed, which was to allow for more opportunity for that light industrial to occur. So to go from a 30-acre minimum size on the five is going to really open the door for that type of activity, so we feel confident that that's a good thing for that type of use, and we wanted to make that part of this package so that we could move forward with that.
Are there questions from councilors? I've got a couple questions.
Sure.
Let's start with the last one, I3 reducing 30 to five acres. Can you tell me how that, I mean, I appreciate the need for light industrial areas in our community, but can you tell me how we, how the environmental sort of rules apply? I mean, tell me a little bit more about light industrial, because it seems like with the smaller acreage, that there's a chance that they'll be closer to other uses, other zones.
I'll take a stab at that. We do have a policy between the Planning Department and the Health Department, and also ingrained in the comprehensive plan, that we do not locate industrial uses within 300 feet of residential uses or other vulnerable populations. That would be any sort of housing development, daycare, assisted living, those types of places. And so even if we are looking at changing the zoning of something for a new I3, you know, from staff's perspective, we would not be recommending it, people.
Okay, all right. And then let's talk a little bit about the new H2 rules around liquor and the distancing, specifically with the hotels. So I like the flexibility of treating a hotel like a restaurant. I think this hotel does actually serve food. I don't want it to be a situation where a hotel comes in, they don't serve any food, and they get the same kind of liquor license. So I appreciate that they have food there. But I am kind of curious about the 25-foot separation. So we have, you mentioned the daycare, which is really important. It's one of the first commercial daycares we had in Lincoln. And I know that they're feeling just a little bit hemmed in by the potential for conflicting uses near their facility, and certainly the signage of that. They have a vape shop or a green shop right next door, which is a real problem, though that sort of sits within the code because we don't have rules there. And so this addition of alcohol, can you tell me, is the 25-foot from the building to the building? Or is it from the front door of the building? I mean, so tell me how we're measuring 25 feet, so that when this daycare owner, Mary Manor, calls me and says, "How does this impact me?", I can answer accurately.
Sure, I appreciate that. So I'll let Paul answer the detailed question, but I'll kind of back up a little bit about your comment about, you know, the other uses around it. So just to be clear, so this proposal is not really addressing any of those other surrounding issues that we know are there?
Yeah.
And I think that's an ongoing conversation, so we'll continue to talk about that. But it's not necessarily addressing those types of situations like signage and...
The signage, I understand that, but I just want to, they have some concerns. They don't want to exacerbate the situation they're in, and so I just add some concerns about, like, what could be close to them in H2 that is not allowed to be close to them right now?
Yep, understood.
So just to be clear, this wouldn't be like a standalone bar that's locating there. This is specifically to hotels, so you'd have to have the primary use of a hotel, and then within that, they could serve alcohol. We did talk to some hotel operators, and it's common that they may sell beer or wine, and then, you know, the folks take it up to their room. So that's kind of the situation we're looking at. But with the 25-foot setback, it is to the property line of the protected use. So it's not to the building of the daycare, it would be to the property line.
Okay.
So in this situation, it'd be more than 25 feet to the building?
To the building, okay, thank you very much for that. Okay. Any other questions? Then, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If there is anyone here who'd like to ask a question, no. If there's anyone here who'd like to comment on this item, you may come forward and comment on this item. Okay. Mr., just a second, Mr. Jones, if you could wait until you're at the microphone. We're televised, and we want everyone to hear you.
My name's Tim Jones. I've been down to 48th and O Street. I think y'all doing a good job on working on your project, but I also believe that it's inappropriate how you're going to affect the people that walk the sidewalks of the O Street. And it's a beautiful place. So what are we supposed to do? Y'all got a plan for us to catch the bus and get off at each stop? Or, because we're not going to have sidewalks over here, and I'm assuming you're not going to make sidewalks over there. So what, we supposed to walk the grass to get to Pizza Hut? Or to get to one of your stores? Because a lot of us don't have vehicles, so taking away the sidewalk on O Street would really affect us, that's everyday people that got to go that way for food and everything else. Because that's where a lot of main stores at, and taking the sidewalk away would affect every resident and person that goes up and down the street. So I hope that you look into that and rebel yourself from making those type of moves. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else? Would you like a rebuttal, please? To offer, bring a rebuttal, please.
Just really quick, just for clarification. So I, the proposal that's before you, when we're dealing with the sidewalk design standards, is meant to make sure we have a sidewalk, and then to improve that condition out there when those opportunities arrive. Like Paul said, when there's a major project, we can get some of that separation. So we're really proposing that we do as good a job as possible to provide the sidewalk system in this area.
Okay, so to improve the sidewalks?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's good clarification. Alrighty. Is there anyone else here who'd like to address anything else on this item? If not, we can move forward on the agenda to first readings. Yes, sir.
You know, delay this to March 23rd?
Yes.
24th?
Yeah, you're right, I'm sorry, I have that down on my side note. Yes, so before we move ahead, Madam Clerk, we have a motion.
To delay this till March 24th?
And that's items 6H?
6H through 6K.
Okay.
Action only.
Action only?
Action only.
All right, all right. So a motion to delay until March 24th, action only, item 6HIJNK. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Carlson. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beckis? Oh, excuse me. Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Okay, so this item will come back on the 24th, action only. Thank you.
Okay, Section 7 is Resolutions First Readings, or Items 7A through 7C. Section 8 is Ordinances First Reading and Related Resolutions, or Items 8A through 8C. And our pending list are Items 9A through 9D.
Okay, thank you. Before we move on to open public comment, I will tell you that about 20 minutes ago, I remembered something I forgot to say at the very beginning of the meeting, and I realize that the chambers is lightly attended right now, but it is still really meaningful. So I'm going to take a point of privilege and recognize that this is the first time we've had a chance to meet as a council since we learned of former Director Pat Lopez's death. And we would just like to give her memory a moment of silence for all of the amazing things she did for our community. Thank you, rest in peace, Pat. All right. As I noted at the start of the meeting, tonight is a moment for open public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not planned to appear on a future agenda may do so right now during the open microphone session. Individuals have five minutes, of which they can speak on any number of topics. We just ask that you remain civil and allow the business of council to proceed. So please come forward if you would like to address city council. Welcome back. All right.
I don't know if y'all got this in a timely manner. I submitted these copies out to each and every one of y'all. Tissue holders, car seats, leg bracelets, arm bracelets, wheelchair.
I did not receive those. Okay.
Thank you. We as a community would like to address that there's been a problem in our neighborhood with the harassment of FBI and some with local police. The FBI has been abusing their powers and their badge among members like myself and everyone else. The FBI has been harassing. They've been harassing me, been harassing my family for over 27 years. Some of you may not believe it because you're busy. But the FBI has been harassing me for 27 years, and harassing my family and personal friends. And it's continuing to this day. I have submitted several lawsuits, which got dropped or curveball, mostly curveball, by the clerks or administrative judges. And I also filed a lawsuit here in Nebraska, assuming for the same position of my case being heard. The FBI has broken into my apartment. The FBI has sabotaged my vehicles. The FBI has plotted with employees to increase items income to attack my income. The FBI has exposed my medical records, cyber my phone, cyberbully, personal mail, any personal information. This is going on in our neighborhood with the local police and the FBI. They're attacking us viciously. The FBI has used and played people to harass, also set me up to pay them for their harassment or investigation for 27 years, which they haven't brought me in yet. But they keep threatening me with all these allegations, but they have arrested me for 2005, which I was, I got acquitted for, and it's a retaliation from the FBI to continue this behavior to this day, where they dictating where we can't go, who we can't date, and what we can't do. The FBI has deprived me of my educational to continue school by raising prices or talking to teachers saying that there's no room. The FBI has, I got a lawsuit. The FBI has began to put us in controversy with other people. The FBI has began to put us in controversy with other people to cause us to be afraid for our lives, where we had to defend for ourselves on new occasions or continue to protect ourselves because of allegations that they have come with, and they're scaring me and they're scaring my family. The FBI has taken viciously from my drawing, out my home, out my home, as you see here, and gave it to their friends to empower them and where they'll make money, and me and my family doesn't get any royalties, any contracts, or any discussion of this, and they've been doing it for 27 years. Any idea that I have that look over it, and they submit it to their people, and me and my family doesn't get anything but harassed. And it's going on in my neighborhood, and it's continued today. And we need something about, something done about this. I don't need the harassment, my family don't need the harassment, my friends don't need the harassment. This is racist to the fullest, as other people being paid to turn the other cheek, but they over here arresting this man, I mean, depriving this man, exposing this man without any guilt conscious or rules of regulation for harassment, reckless behavior, and power of work and badges. And they're dictating where he can't go, where he can't go, who he should be with and who he shouldn't be with, who he can be friends with and who he can't be friends with, and stealing out his house and neglecting from feeding his own family if he wanted to. They stole his ideas, don't matter if he working or not, them his ideas, and the FBI stole it, and they running around with it like they don't owe that man. And I put in several lawsuits that they neglect to take place of, and I really needs the help of the chambers, because I'm not getting the help of FBI. I talked to Department of Justice, I talked to FBI, and nobody helped. So I need the help of Congress.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Thank you.
Well, I return every Monday until somebody help me. I'm not speaking words, I'm speaking my heart.
I understand.
And I will continue to do this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who'd like to address council? Five minutes is the time limit, sir. Thank you.
Can't help but notice that the white landlord got six minutes and some odd seconds, and this man wasn't allowed to speak that long, but the other man was. Hi, my name is Anastasia Fenner, and I'm not going to give my address, I'm going to waive it for my personal safety. This man right here, I would like to tell you about, not just him, but other folks This is Mahmud Khalil, and this is from a post that was about more than 20 hours ago, about a day old. He graduated from a leadership program at Columbia University in December and was still in university housing. He's married, and his wife is eight months pregnant. Mahmud is passionate and educated and about education and has a variety of jobs involving education and disadvantaged youth. He's particularly interested in creating programs that help educate out-of-school youth in developing countries. Mahmud has a green card. He is a lawful, permanent resident of the United States. Remember that, because it'll be important later. Saturday night, as he and his wife walked into their university-owned apartment building, two men in plain clothes slipped into the door behind them. The men claimed they were ICE agents. They also claimed that they had a warrant for Mahmud's arrest on their phone, which is not how you give a warrant, and said that his student visa was being revoked. He told them that he had a green card, and his wife went up to their apartment to get it. When she returned, the agents, confused, made a phone call to where they were told that they were revoking that too. The agents refused to give his wife a reason for why he was being detained. When his lawyer called, ICE refused to say why he was being detained and that his student visa was being revoked. Again, the lawyer pointed out that he had a green card. You may be wondering, hey, isn't it illegal for ICE to come into private property of the university without showing a warrant to the university for the arrest? Wouldn't the warrant necessarily say something about why he was being arrested? Great question. Columbia University has publicly stated that ICE requires a warrant to enter non-public areas of campus like housing, but also, as of the moment, they have refused to answer whether ICE contacted them before slipping into the apartment behind him and his wife. At the moment, while this post was made, his wife, an American citizen, attempted to see him at the New Jersey facility and told, was told that he was not there. His lawyer said he may be as far away as Louisiana, and in fact, he was found after being stolen, shipped across several states to Louisiana for simply trying to advocate for, I don't know, places like Lincoln, Nebraska, to stop, you know, sending our 2,000-pound bombs to kill civilians that live in tents, to stop sending the bombs, to, you know, kill the elderly. It's, I, what was a brilliant thing that was said today? That a home is the central pillar of a safe community. Now, councilmembers, do you think that dropping 2,000-pound bombs on people, on their homes, on their hospitals, makes for a safe community? No. And it is clear, the, the lack of caring is very clear. This is not the only student that this has happened to. There was a Chinese international student who also has been arrested and disappeared. Last I was made aware, no one knows where she is at, and this is the kind of behavior that this council supports, because we're not stopping the bombs that are being sent. These people are standing up directly against the war machine that you literally fund. Public-private partnership means that city dollars are being spent to train people how to kill in the most disgusting ways. You are allowing this kind of behavior. Your inaction is disappearing people, because you are saying, "We are the bomb builders. We will build these bombs. We will not stop. We will not stop killing disabled people, or the elderly, or infants, or pregnant people." No. You're like, "Let's, let's take a nap at our little council meeting. Let's ignore folks. Let's ignore their pleas for peace." And instead, let's continue to allow our city to, you know, A, allow hundreds of people to go homeless, and then also allow thousands of people to be murdered. You're not welcome.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address council? Is there anyone else who'd like to address council? All right. Seeing none?
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second. Second, Carlson. Please call the roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
We are adjourned.